Is that thing ready to go there?
Okay.
Good.
All right, I think it's one o'clock, at least on some clocks, not all of them. But I think we're correct on that, so we're here for the Friday, January 22, Manhattan City Commission Retreat. And we've got four items on the agenda, starting with an update from the city manager's office, and then a presentation on organizational excellence. And then the commission will discuss goals for 2021. And then we'll have a little wrap up on the strategic plan. So about four little steps today, and we'll start off with Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Glad you're here. And I know Commissioner Esslerbrook is planning to join us later, but he's in route and listening in. And so again, the mayor went over the agenda for today, and hopefully that meets with everybody's agreement. One of the things I wanted to do is just kind of do a 2020 recap. Obviously, 2020 with the pandemic was like no other. I mean, it really caused a lot of challenges for us. And I want to just take this opportunity to give a shout out to the folks in the Emergency Operations Center. You might recall that in 2019, we converted the headquarters' fire station, a large assembly room, into an emergency operations center. So it was big enough to handle the planning and the technology and communication that we needed to have with our partners in the community and in the region. That went on for several weeks, planning for a flood, fortunately, that didn't happen, based on some thoughts that we might be close to an uncontrolled release from Tuttle Creek Boulevard or from Tuttle Creek Reservoir. So a huge effort there. And then we did have some flood damage with some of our sinkholes and that sort of thing that we dealt with. And a little bit on Wildcat. But for this pandemic, the EOC, so we reconverted and expanded on the use of the headquarters' fire station to include the training room and the lecture hall to give regular updates for media and expanded it to a regional briefing component to include both Potawatomi County and Gary County. So it was a huge effort. They'd been at it for months since March, continual operation. And I just appreciate the dedication and time that that group, which is a multi-agency group, that have put into this and helped support the Health Department, which obviously has had a huge role in this whole endeavor. And then all of us have been in a position to do various things to support that. Back in April, we didn't know the extent of what the impacts were going to be, but we kind of anticipated that there would be a lot of revenue shortfalls from sales tax. And so as part of that, we made some pretty big decisions and made some pretty big cuts in our operating budget and decided not to move forward with a lot of our parks and recreation activities and thus didn't hire any of that seasonal staff. A lot of other folks, even because of the pandemic concerns, also didn't open their aquatic facilities. A few did. But those were big concerns for us, something that we haven't had a lot of training in from this type of pandemic. So it was one of those things that we were certainly meeting new challenges and also having to figure out how to work remotely, figuring out, reemphasizing who our essential workforce was, splitting those crews so we made sure that there were people that could keep the water plant and water coming out of the taps and the sewers operating and be able to repair those lines and that they weren't all in quarantine or impacted as our facilities. So just a lot of significant challenges that we had. We also put on a hiring freeze, just a number of different aspects. And for many of those folks, including a lot of your senior leadership, that work has been arduous. And they've done a commendable job in continuing to provide services as well as meeting the needs of our own organization and the community. So I appreciate all that they've done. Beyond COVID, we were able to do quite a few things in economic development. We were able to land Bev Hub, bought an existing facility out at the business park at the airport and look forward, they've started construction to add on to that facility and re-equip it. So we're pleased that they're investing in our community. You know, one of the things you're going to notice in this list is that city projects themselves contributed mightily to the overall economy of the city, just in the construction contracts that we have and kept in place. So a lot of those workers were in our hotels, which were suffering because of there wasn't any visitors. So those were some big components that helped the local economy keep meeting some of the needs. But the recreation centers, we've had a few setbacks in some of the time due to COVID and deliveries of certain equipment and materials, but all in all, they've marched on fairly well. Other infrastructure, the North Campus Corridor, the Edge District, the big project there of College and Kimball. That was a huge project for that overall aspect of the community and just starting to complete on the infrastructure component. There's still a lot of streetscape and other amenities to be added. North Manhattan probably is the other big one there. It is the big one. So the third and final phase of that project down from AIB down to Claflin, the new Signal there. And really, over the last five years, we've completely reconstructed North Manhattan Avenue between Claflin and Kimball Avenue. So that's a, it was an old rural two-lane road with ditches. And we've completely upgraded it into a more modern section with turning lanes. And certainly something as other construction occurs throughout that district will help move traffic along very well. So we're pleased. And that was almost all financed through our local economic development funds. Other aspects, we did about $2 million in contracted street maintenance, two concrete projects and one asphalt project, and included some of the Safe Routes to Schools program as well. We've had activity with the levy, more agreements. We talked about some betterment improvements that we could use that will be beneficial for us for the Corps to do as part of these bids and significant savings, we believe, that will happen because of that, as well as starting our easement acquisitions to ensure that all of the easements are purchased and necessary, of course, that's part of our matching requirement, too. Lot of storm sewer work, the big project on Fifth Street that went all the way to Points and then picked up a lot of the water and put in clear over to the Fourth Street Interceptor that runs into Wildcat Creek. So relieved a lot of water from the downtown area, and we're looking forward to that paying dividends for us here in the future. A lot of other utility projects, a lot of water line replacements, some in the Northview area, a lot of hydrant and fire hydrant and other valve replacements from aged infrastructure. So considerable aspect there. We bought a new radio system, the county led the effort for putting in the new digital radio system. Big project was the expansion of the BioSolids Farm as part of our wastewater treatment plant treatment program. So that was a big investment for us and will meet our needs well for decades. Aggieville is a significant investment, the 12th Street project. If you haven't been by there, it opened up a couple of days ago, and it's really looking nice. And so we've got some other amenities to put in there later this spring with plant material and stuff, but we think it's going to be a huge improvement and give folks an impression about what some of the future improvements might be. Of course, the parking structure and got underway, Laramie Street, 14th Street to come. Those are big projects for us. Airport, the parking lot and all of the aspects associated with that, a huge improvement for the airport. Started on the runway replacement design. And then something that will certainly benefit us for the next 12 years is the half-cent sales tax renewal in economic development. So that was a huge effort and benefit for the city and the community. And beyond all that infrastructure and aspect, we were able to get some cultural aspects in with the art sculptures down on Third Street, which were very nice, especially when people could, needed to be outside to enjoy some things. Partnership with the Zoo Trust to do the Expedition Asia project, and that's undergoing well. We've got all the utilities in for that project, and that's going well without a lot of rock. And then the Discovery Center Foundation stepping forward to start some improvements on kids. I did just want to go back and just show you, this is some of the things that happened relative to COVID and then some of the funding we received. You know, the city commission, I applaud your efforts for providing early on, very early on, before any of the federal funds were out there, some loans for our businesses, 84 loans totaling $372,000. So a good program there that helped tie some folks over. The CDBG funds, $634,000 we received, 2.1 million from the Department of Transportation and FAA. Down here, the county received just under $15 million in Spark allocation from the state, and we received about 2.9 of that. You know, going, part of the improvements was the outdoor dining platforms, a lot of public relations aspects. But one of the things that I don't know that you're fully aware of, and maybe not at all, but one of the things that happened late in this process was the ruling that we could reimburse all of our emergency service departments through Sparks. So for us, that was about 2.8 million just for the fire department. So that pretty much used our allocation. Of course, that's a big benefit to the general fund as a way of that. So we have another list of things that we were planning to fund that if we get more CARES Act money, we think we can get some reimbursements for as well. It will depend on the rules and that sort of thing, but that would allow us then to reimburse some of the other funds that we have utilized some of those projects for. So what's coming ahead this year? So again, more recovery. Obviously, there was a new federal package that was passed in December. We're just now finding out some of that information, and we anticipate there'll be more information coming forward about some of the benefits to our community. We don't know that there'll be a lot. We had heard there'll probably be some more Department of Transportation, airport funding that will probably could go for additional rent relief, for example, that we did for some of the airport tenants. We're not sure about some of the operational components. The last bill, we benefited from over $900,000 helping meet some of our security measures. You know, whether we have seven flights or two flights, we still have to have the same number of security personnel. So that certainly helped us a lot. And so we're looking forward to how we might get additional assistance and what some of those recovery efforts might be. Of course, we're embarking on the strategic plan, and we have reps from Planning Next viewing with us today, and they'll be on later on in the afternoon to kind of talk about your retreat next Friday. On the economic development front, kind of a new initiative with the Manhattan Area Chamber, focusing on jobs, talent, attraction and retention, entrepreneurship opportunities and innovation in the community. So I know the Chamber also has established a committee to look at new business park sites and existing facilities because we're rapidly taking up all of our available space that has infrastructure already to it. So that's a big planning effort for the future. The recreation centers are going to be a big component for us. So Douglas Center is nearing completion, anticipating that opening up next month. Anthony Recreation Center, probably April-ish timeframe, and then Eisenhower this summer. So looking forward to all three of those. Obviously, staffing those is going to be a significant component for us and something we'll certainly be visiting with you more about. But we certainly, some of those positions, we budgeted for partially in 2019 and a little bit more in 2020. So those are some challenges we'll have. We're looking at relocating some of our existing staff to those facilities to help in that effort. So more briefing to come on that in the future. The infrastructure, we got three big projects on Kimball that are planned. We've got the two KDOT grant projects, that's for the middle section of Kimball, basically where the project stopped at the entrance to the West Stadium and then goes all through Grain Science, just to the rowing facility, that area, from a continued widening project. The other one is the straightening the curve section, we like to call it, between North Manhattan and Dennison. So basically, from about the metal arc entrance to about the service entrance to Enbaf. So that's where that comes, the livestock crossing comes out, and it'll be a significant improvement project there. And then the Benefit District Component Project that is on West Kimball there in front of Candlewood, which creates new access to the Candlewood Shopping Center, as well as the third one. Another round of street maintenance activity and Safe Routes to School. You awarded the infrastructure buildout at the K-State Research Park. We're excited about that. That's where K-State with their new venture with Stormont Vale plans to develop the Physicians Assistance Program. And so we look forward to more information about when that happens. But before they can really get that going, we've got to get that other infrastructure in, which is underway. If you've been by there lately, you've seen they're moving a lot of dirt up there. So the Kirkwood Drive and Bridge there at Eisenhower Middle School is proceeding well. They're starting to work on the bridge, and that's going to be a great improvement for that area of the community. Additional Aggieville projects and opportunities, we got some updates coming to you at future city commission meetings. But really, the initial focus is on North Manhattan in front of the parking structure. So from essentially Laramie to Blumenton and how that section of roadway gets improved while we're doing the construction on the parking structure. So those are, and then we look at other components within Aggieville itself, whether it be Morrow, the other part of 12th Street. There's also interest in redevelopment. So there's interest in redeveloping potentially some of our other parking lots, as well as other private property redevelopment. So you know, the TIF time clock is ticking. And so having projects to move forward that's going to increase that increment will only be beneficial for us. So more to come on that particular aspect. The Levy Project will finish out purchasing easements and then looking forward to a bid project, probably mid-year bidding by the Corps and then award a contract and issuing bonds to meet our obligation for that. The runway design should get finalized this year. Not looking at construction until actual calendar year '23, but we got some time to work on some of our challenges there to try and get the full funding for the full 150 feet. So that's some of the things. And we're hopeful that, you know, one of the things Congress has been wanting to do and even the state of Kansas is infrastructure. So we're hopeful that there'll be some other infrastructure programs in the future as well.
Ron?
Yes.
Jason. About the Aggieville project, I know we are doing our parking different for this year. Have you heard any concerns regarding the parking challenges or changes that we made with the garage and the limitations on where they can park and how long?
So there has been. We haven't fully implemented those changes. I think we're looking at February to start those. We've got, you might have seen some more signage with bags on it. That's, they're in place, they just haven't been initiated. There was a day or two where the bags weren't on them. I think it got a few people excited about what that meant. So we're doing, taking this time to educate folks. Jason, you want to add to that?
Yeah, part of our problem, our issue right now is we're down to one parking officer. So we're in recruitment phase to get a second parking officer. Once we do that, then we'll have coverage to both downtown and Aggieville. We have put signs, as Ron mentioned, on Fremont, in the neighborhoods just adjacent to the east, and in the city park. We have bagged those. We'll take those off around the first of February. Hopefully, we'll have somebody on it, maybe the middle of February. The Fuchsia parking permit zones, the color zone, we have sent letters out. Some of those tenants have come in and bought their $5 a year pass. But when we get ready to take the bags off and really unveil, we'll send another letter letting them know. A lot of them were probably gone when they got, you know, the letters were sent the first of the year. We recognize they're coming back now and will be for the next couple of weeks. So when we're ready to roll that out, we'll give them another week's notice to come in and buy that permit for $5.
The businesses are comfortable?
Yeah, so we adjusted everything in the district to three hour. So even the parking lots are three hour and on-street. We have had some blowback from some businesses as to where are my employees supposed to park? You know, we counter that with where do you want your customers to park? We have pushed employees to city park even further into city park than we traditionally have. Again, eight to five Monday through Friday. That's another education component because a lot of them were under the impression evenings and weekends would be enforced, and that's just not our mode of operation. So that helped as well. But they're clearly having to move into the park further to allow then the customer or the three-hour turnover to occur closer to the district itself. Chipotle is really the only one that I've talked to so far. Dennis has done a pretty good job with the businesses and educating them, and we'll do that again here in the next couple of weeks.
Some continuing initiatives for this year. Obviously, we just had some discussion about the Housing Advisory Board as well as the workforce housing component of that. So look forward to that continuing. You know, the next three bullets were things that were, matter of fact, when the pandemic hit, we had an RFP out for the housing study. We were getting ready to bring the UDO chapters to you all for starting that adoption process. There has, you know, we put a hold on that RFP and withdrew the housing study, the UDO. There has been a little bit of discussion, a lot of work by staff to refine a lot of that and some engagement with the planning board, but we're looking at bringing that back on. And so some feedback today and even into Tuesday when the department heads are in front of you as to, you know, maybe helping determine some priorities from a component of that. And then the annexation study was, we had that consultant contract, but we put it on hold. We're still in the data gathering component and working on some of the draft assumptions for that and gathering that data. It's got quite a bit of work before there's a draft report that would be available to come back to you all. So and, you know, basically where we're at is the department's looking at the services that would be needed in that area and how much that would impact them. And then senior management vetting that before it comes to you. So those are some of those components that we're waiting on from that aspect. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force, their first meeting is next week. So we're looking forward to working with that. The Recovery Task Force, kind of feeling its way for what it wants to do in the future. You know, we've gone to once-a-month meetings, basically, unless there's something that wants to happen earlier. Obviously, I think one of the big things that we'll all face is just how do we improve, even with vaccination, how do we improve consumer confidence? How, what is it going to be even after that to get folks to reengage in the community with the businesses, the restaurants, conferences? All of that is going to be a big component and a challenge for us at our own facilities and attractions. So that will continue to be a component. And then just a lot of budget challenges. You know, we are, I feel very fortunate. We didn't get the big hiccup in sales tax that we thought we might, thanks to a lot more online purchasing. That compensating use tax was up 30%, and so that really helped us. So we only finished about 2% less than last year, and so that was good. Also, most of the property tax payments have come in. I know County Tracer Shiloh Hager reported that the December sales tax payments were comparable to the previous year, so nothing really unusual there. But we know there's a lot of our businesses that are struggling. So it's still one of those cases where we know we'll continue to have challenges. One of the things that we want to emphasize to you that in our hiring freeze, not only did we not fill those vacancies that we had in March, but we've lost a lot more people, which we haven't rehired. So and as we try to restart, we have been rehiring, and we did rehire in selective areas. It's been a lot more challenging to find qualified persons to fill those positions. So that's a longer process, and it's putting a lot of pressure on our HR folks, too. So you know, just the whole pandemic issue of working remotely and, you know, having to teach your kids if you have family members while you're home trying to work remotely and all of those aspects, we have those same circumstances with our own employees. And just under 50% have families and school-age kids. So it's a significant component for us. But retooling ourselves and restaffing and building those levels up to be able to offer an appropriate level of services and programs is a challenge for us. It's something that we'll certainly talk more about on Tuesday. Our organizational excellence initiatives, we're going to cover here in a little bit, a little bit more. But you know, our CIP has been a challenge because things have been flat. So there hasn't been a lot of extra money to buy, especially things that we traditionally have funded out of the general fund. So that's been a challenge for us, having an adequate amount of reserves. We did finish, if you managed to look at the monthly report that was in your mail folder, we finished with about $6.5 million net. I know it says it's 6.9, but if there was also about $500,000 in negative in some of the KPNF and other property tax funds. So about $6.5 million balance in the general fund, which is about $3 million more than we typically have. So that's been a big benefit for us from that standpoint and puts us in a much more manageable situation, but still a lot of challenges. So we're going to bring our Baker Tilly, our financial advisors who we've been working with on doing some of our debt analysis and financial analysis and policies that we should have for reserve amounts, as well as other aspects of our debt management program. So that'll be coming up here probably the next month or two. So it's a challenge for us. You've seen the little box there previously towards the end of last year. We still have certain funds that are going to be challenged. So obviously, the Tourism and Convention Fund, TG Transit Guest Tax, we ended about 40% less revenue there, a lot of entities that are funded by that. Special Alcohol Fund, which is actual alcohol sales in a restaurant or bar. It's liquor by the drink, not packaged sales. So that's been about 40% down as well. So all of those agencies, you know, we've kind of given notice that, which we typically do, although we've emphasized it this year just because we experienced it last year that there were going to be revenue shortfalls, and we may not be able to provide them the total amount that we budgeted to fund them, which was the same thing for '21 as it was in '20, which they didn't get all of either. So the only good thing is a lot of those organizations have been able to access other CARES Act that I think has helped them somewhat, but I think there's also others that haven't. So and there could be additional funds that come forward in some of the new packages that might help make up for some of those aspects. I know specifically in the payroll protection program under the Small Business Association, there are venues like entertainment and movie theaters and museums and such that have been identified as being eligible and nonprofits for that program, which before was only for profit businesses. So.
Question, how much down is the City University? Question, how much down is the City University Fund? Is it, it, I mean, it's a different pop, different identified population. I just wondered if it's.
Sure, so that's.
By December.
Sales taxes and franchise collected on the campus. Is it about forty, fifty, forty-five percent down?
Forty-five, okay, thank you.
Yep, I guess kind of the good news there is that we didn't have a lot of projects identified and, and most of what we did have identified were going to be multi-year funded projects anyway. So those are some things that with the crossings there on North Manhattan and then of course the contribution it's making to the North Campus Corridor. So obviously we funded that through temp notes and then we had been accumulating cash in those funds for those projects. So it's not a, a big impediment now. If it, you know, were to continue to be down, that would have some impacts going forward.
Ron, wasn't that like half a million dollars a year?
Yeah, it's about six hundred? Six hundred thousand, I think.
Yeah, the lion's, I mean, the lion's share of that money was going there. So that's interesting if it's down forty-five percent, that seems like it would have taken quite a hit.
So I, you know, a big part of that's athletics, obviously. And then the union and, and other restaurants and, and food sales and all of that on campus when they have been in hybrid and obviously last spring when they, they sent everybody home. So, you know, hopefully we'll get back to, to normal, maybe by fall, that things will be a little more predictable from that standpoint.
How much were the TGT funds down?
About forty percent.
Forty?
Yeah, we're forecasting them, I think, to stay.
They would, they would parallel special alcohol then, okay.
Yeah, those were both, alcohol might be down a little bit more than that. Of course, the, the alcohol sales are split three ways. A third of those going to special parks and recreation. You've got a third of those going to treatment and education, which is our social service agencies and the special alcohol committee that relate to that. That is a group that I think has got some extra funding. I know our Rotary Speaker this morning was Beth Clue with Shepherd's Crossing. And she was just giving, you know, in twenty nineteen or twen-, yeah, twenty nineteen, they provided about two hundred thousand dollars worth of assistance in the community in various, various aspects. In twenty twenty, they provided four hundred thousand. And a lot of that was due to additional availability of funds and some new funding sources that they got through the Manhattan Community Foundation. But there was some CARES Act money that was available also. So some of those agencies do have access to some other funds, some of them don't. I know Colony Mental Health, I don't think originally did, but laid in the Spark Program, there was some money identified for some portion of that mental health component. So again, we're just, I think it's, one of the things we've said is we've kind of told folks that, you know, you, you know, your first half of the year, there shouldn't be an issue with revenue flow if it continues like it did last year, but the last half maybe so. And, and probably the time to address it would be as we approach the budget season. So, and just see where we are and we should know by then what some of the new programs might be that might be available as well.
Ron?
Yes?
This is Dusha. I think one of the things, I may have put it in my goals is the first round of CARES Act money was done on January, December thirty first. Second round of nine hundred some odd is coming, billion dollars is coming up. And then they're talking about the one point nine trillion. I think, and they're designated because they understand the impact it's having on all of our communities, such as Shepherd's Crossing. Is there a way we can access or when they come to us with social services and special alcohol funds, what kind of money they received from each of those funding sources? They're trying to, the money that's coming in is meant to help them not only survive, but help the communities that are within the, that are helping those residents as well.
Sure, no, I think as we ask for those requests for twenty-two funds, we can certainly ask them to provide any additional information about other revenue sources and how they've used those. I know, I don't think we've spent much at all of the CDBG funds yet. We've, we've all talked about how we're making them eligible for CARES related, but I know even the emergency shelter with other, they were trying to access the programs that expired at the end of twenty. And because there's no deadline, well, there is, but it's like three years on the CDBG fund. So we felt like, and we weren't pressuring them to do that. I think that was the smart thing to do was to, to use those other resources that were available and weren't expiring so that they could take advantage of that and, and kind of use the CDBG funds as a kind of a backstop, if you will, for the future. So not knowing what might happen. So I think that's a, still, still at play and there could be some additional HUD funds coming too.
And that's the same thing that applies because the hospitality industry has been impacted dramatically as well. And I would like to see when they come to present what they did receive from those funds because that's also taxpayer money.
Sure.
And I want to make sure we are, our, our groups and our businesses, nonprofits and the hospitality industry is getting what, what they need to be deservingly getting for during this time.
All right, well, that concludes my, my part of the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about anything I presented so far. No? All right, well, I got us ahead of schedule, I just want everybody to realize that. Jason, you up?
All right.
Thank you. Yes? We wanted to really focus on some of our organizational excellence initiatives. And we provided you with a matrix of those components of some things that we've been working out with committees throughout our organization to really try and focus on what some of our needs are from, as an organization. And certainly that ties in with our strategic planning effort as well for what is important for us as an organization. And so Jason's going to kick that off and I think several of the others are going to contribute.
What's that, Jared? Yeah, it's small, holy cow. Yeah, I'll, I'll zoom in and. Yeah, I will. Good, all right. Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm going to be somewhat of a broken record this afternoon. I know you've all heard a lot of this from me before. But one of the key pieces of any organizational excellence initiative has to do with money. And we, we're going to lead off with money and then we're going to get into people, which is our most valuable resource that we also recognize we can't address a lot of our organizational issues if we don't have some sort of strategy and understanding where we're at financially. So our general fund is just a touch over thirty-one million dollars. We've hovered between thirty and thirty-two in the last three, four, five years. And we typically have a balance. We had two million dollar balance there for several years. We bumped it up to three million. We ended the year in twenty nineteen with over three million. And when we got to the end of this year, obviously we're well over three million. We're at six and a half million, as Ron pointed out, about six point four nine. That's a substantial number. A lot of that is on the back of the people in the organization not implementing programs. If you look at the detail sheets in the monthly report, you'll see by department and by division where spending was reduced. We're so reliant on sales tax as an organization. Our general fund is heavily influenced by sales tax. For the last five years, a month or two into each year, we pull our departments in and anticipate shortfalls, which means the budget kind of gets set over here and we realize revenues may not come in. Twenty eighteen, they didn't come in. Twenty nineteen, the flood occurred, we had issues with our budget, we had to cut back then. Twenty twenty, clearly, we had to make adjustments in order to anticipate where revenues would come in. When you're so heavily reliant on sales tax, you have to watch each month and gauge where you're going to be at the end of the year. The thing in twenty eighteen, we realized if you start in June trying to save money, the majority of it has left the barn. Park and Rec is so far down the road with all their expenditures and all their programs and all their facilities. If you start in June or July, it is, you play heck catching up. You have to identify these things early. This will be part of your update next Tuesday. We're going to get into Park and Rec. We need to talk to you all about how understaffed we are right now in that department, how lacking in personnel and, and just the sheer capacity that we're dealing with that are only going to be able to accomplish so much. All the money in the world isn't going to change that right now. You can't ramp that department back up after it saved the organization almost two million dollars last year. And that has a lot to do with personnel. It has a lot to do with experience of that personnel in this organization, doing the things it does every day. That sales tax is so important. I can't stress it enough. And we walk into each year guessing as to where that's going to be. Down two and a half percent is a blessing, but it's still three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we have to find in our budget and we did last year. Where are we going to be in twenty twenty-one? We are challenged each year to crystal ball this thing because decisions have to be made January, February, and no later than March in order to realize savings to, to keep us within budget. When we look at the general fund and we talk about a cash balance, Manhattan is positioned heavily reliant on sales tax, subject to floods, Wildcat and Blue River, natural disasters, we've had tornadoes in this community, we've had ice storms, we've had windstorms. All those things require additional resources. They require the government to step up and provide more than they traditionally do. Budgets are built to basically provide the everyday type of occurrence, not the special ones. So when we sit down with Baker Tilly, our financial advisors who advise cities across the country, they gave us a percentage, Manhattan, based on where you're positioned and as reliant as you are on sales tax, twenty-five to thirty-five percent should be a balance. That is eight to ten million dollars. We were at, we were at two just like three years ago. We're at three and a half the last couple of years. We're at six and a half right now. And a lot of that has to do with that two million dollars Park and Rec saved. A lot of it has to do with the two point nine million dollars we got from CARES and Spark and then the, the airport money as well, almost two million dollars out there. You start adding that money up, that's why that balance is so high. We can't take away from the fact that we didn't do a lot of programming, we lost a lot of staff. We didn't spend a lot of money, that's accurate. But you have to recognize where that federal money is coming in too. So moving forward, from this point forward, we'd really like to develop some five-year strategies. Five-year strategies on that fund balance, trying to reach the eight to ten million dollar factor. The other wildcard you all have to deal with by statute is RCPD. Again, broken record, you've heard it over and over, you're handed that budget, you have to fund it. There's no opportunity in the year, middle of the year, first quarter to look at them and tell them, ratchet down. Park and Rec can ratchet down two million. We can't tell RCPD to ratchet down two million. We don't have that flexibility. It is a mandate. You pay it. If property tax would come in eighty percent, ninety percent, sales tax come in ninety percent, ninety-five percent, we're still funding them. Our general fund is really fifty million. When you take the thirty-two we have and the eighteen we owe them, it's really a fifty million dollar general fund. And most cities in this state operate that way. We're unique. We have to create cushion. It's factored in, most cities don't set aside twenty-five to thirty-five percent. It's probably more in the eighteen to twenty-five percent range. But since we have the liability of PD and we're obligated to make that payment with no oversight, they bumped us up to twenty-five to thirty-five and it's wise. We've got that six million dollar lawsuit we're still paying on for administrative issues at PD. The Lowry case, it's about there, but we ended up issuing debt for ten years. We're still paying on that six million. It'll cost us close to ten at the end of the day. The exposure we have has to be taken into account. So when we build these, it's not just putting money over here because we can. It's, it's putting money over there because you have to. And I equate it back into your own personal lives. You have a checking account which goes up and down every month, money in, money out. You got a savings account for things that happened to you in your family, in your homes. That savings account is that general fund cash balance. And if it's too low, we expose ourselves greatly. I'll, I'll stop. I, I get pretty worked up about it, but I also don't want us to get to a point where we're so exposed and we're in jeopardy here of, of running into situations and circumstances. I feel like we've been nipped. We've been nipped on the flood, we've been nipped on this pandemic and it's kind of a wake-up call. We need to get back to where financially the health of this organization is solid and we can withstand one of these things. We could withstand a financial dip in sales tax, which, is that on the horizon? I don't know. I hope it's not. But we've seen a plateau now for five years and it has impacted our organization greatly. And that's really what we're talking about. Really talking about not doing things for the last five years because we haven't had the resources or quite honestly, just the willingness to raise property taxes. That's been a very difficult thing for us to do in the last five years. So this OEI has really been born out of the environment that we've been in for the last five. Operating fund, we'd like to establish a five-year strategy on that operating fund, which may involve increases each year, modest increases, two, three, four percent. That allows us to pay our people, that allows us to buy the equipment we need to do the jobs. When those guys go out and fix those water lines and sewer lines, they have utility revenue supporting them. We need them, we absolutely need them. But every time they bring those three, four and five percent increases to you, it's so those folks can maintain themselves financially, have the equipment and, and tools necessary to go do those jobs. It's the same thing, the general fund, airport, Park and Rec, street, number of services that are out there doing these things every day. Those two, three, four percent increases allow us to keep doing our jobs, what's expected of us. When we go zeros or we're expected to just use what we had last year, it's a negative. We have to cut to do that. Costs go up. Labor, I mean, the, the things we go buy, the things we have to utilize in our budgets go up. We end up having to cut in order to make that. We would like a five-year strategy moving forward, modest increases, able to continue to provide those, those services. Debt, we got to recognize where we're at with the three taxes. Our debt is climbing. Our debt capacity will be challenged in our bond, in our temp note issue in February. And you'll see that, it's substantial. It includes the levy and it includes that parking garage in Aggieville. It'll take a chunk out of the bond capacity we have left. It's time to start looking at how to use the point two, the point two-five and the point five in addressing our debt. That point five renewal starts in twenty twenty-three is going to put us in a, a much, much better position than we were a year ago talking about that, no doubt about it. Just want to put that strategy on paper, want to acknowledge where some of those revenues are going and offsetting some of those expenses. Strategic plan, and this is where the rest of the OEI initiatives are really going to hone in on as well. We've got to balance those revenues with those expenses as we move forward. We need to get those priorities identified by our communities. So when we come to you and we talk about these increases, they coincide with what the communities given planning next, feedback, what you've given. next feedback, what you've given planning next feedback, and move on with these strategies intertwined for the next five years. Be happy to answer any questions. I tried to get that through that fairly quick. I know you've heard a lot of this before. We just wanna set up kinda where we're headed in the budget season. And for the rest of the priorities in OEI, they're so linked to what we do financially for our people.
Jason, this is Commissioner Eddy. You know, you discussed the general funds and said, we talked a lot, we talked a lot about RCPD. And they do have law board, that is their oversight. But it's very difficult to ask law, not law board necessarily, but RCPD because they, the safety of the community always comes up, and also staffing there. But you mentioned, and I agree with you, the general fund keeps decreasing, and we haven't really sustained it very well, and the reserve funds as well. During the pandemic, we shut down Parks and Rec services, so that helped us a lot. But where are we, for us to get a better idea of what it is we're missing, what, and you'll probably be discussing this later, what have we cut that we don't really recognize the impact, whether it's in legal services, or in human resources, or in Parks and Rec, or Public Works? What are the missing pieces that the public is not getting a big picture of because you all do your job so well, but at the same time, there's an impact on our community?
Yeah, and it's, it's one of those things that's very difficult to quantify. Because you do ask the same people or less people to go do the same thing. Where I think the department updates are going to get next Tuesday, they'll start highlighting some of these things. They're all feeling that stress of where they're at from a personnel perspective. They're also very worried about creating the momentum to create the enhancements to their equipment, their facilities. When we let things go for too long, we start to worry about safety. Some, there's a lot of our operation that has an eye right now towards contracting. Because either the resources and people aren't there, or the equipment just hasn't been updated. And in order to accomplish it, we're looking there. I'm not saying we've gone there yet, but there's a clear recognition when those things gradually, it's, it's not as if we've come in as an organization or as a department and just cut, just eliminate, like 10, 15, 20. No, it's just been this slow gradual process. In 2016 and 2017, we absorbed it. 2018, we had a struggle. 2019, we absorbed. It's, it's five years of absorption is what we're talking about. So it is hard to see. It is hard to see. And it's even something internally, we get reminded of as we reengage, talk about budgets, talks about CIP, oh yeah, we were supposed to do that in 16. We were supposed to upgrade that in 17. We were supposed to add that person in 18. Those things don't happen. So those challenges just continue. Things are just, they're not getting done. And I'll allow those departments that time because I do think they have some feedback for you all in terms of where they're at. But collectively, I think that's really where we come in and recognize it. And it does speak to itself in the OEI initiatives as well. Yep.
I wanna make one, one comment though, because you know, there's folks out there probably listening. And all kinds of things have been posted about, you know, the Kansas Legislature and making certain that everybody understands the difference between mill levy and dollars. And then people have posted all kinds of charts on Facebook saying our property taxes have gone up 300%. And what I'm hearing from you is that wasn't enough. That may be what they're hearing too. That's sort of scary. Because the message I'm getting here is that, you know, the staff would like to raise property taxes, and that's not what the people want to see.
I can certainly appreciate.
And I understand the dilemma that, you know, we've been trying to, you know, fund everything through sales tax and not property tax. And that was the idea. That's why the people supported that eco-devo tax. And so, you know, if the idea is to come in here and, you know, let's raise the mill levy on property tax after people voted for the sales tax, that's gonna be a hard sell.
And I'll just circle back. You know this as well as I do. Of 156 mills on anybody's property in this town, about 11 of it is the general fund to help support people. And that's at about 6.5. And 4.5 is for your debt. And when you look at the total debt and you look at the total general operating fund of this organization, those two are fractions. We don't use property tax to run that $32 million very much. When you talk about a mill being worth $600,000, and you're only levying six of them for the general fund, you've, you've got to recognize that that's not a lot of money going into the overall $32 million general fund. That, that has, I can appreciate people not wanting their property taxes going up. I can. You know, we could cut the entire six mills. And it's not gonna reduce your property taxes by 5 or 6%. You could walk out of here and say, let's do one more cent, one more full cent in sales tax. Let's generate another 11 million dollars. You could cut our mills completely to zero. You're still not gonna give that property taxpayer a 10% reduction. That's the disconnect that I feel like our citizens have. When they go to pay their $3,000, $4,000, or $5,000 property tax, and I've told you this story, there's a, there's a gentleman in this community that pays $800,000 in property tax. And he told me it all went to us at the city. And I told him, 80,000 of your 800 comes to the city. And he was, he was like, where's the other 720 go? You need to pay attention to where your taxes go. We do feel that. We get, I, it's not going away. That, I mean, it's not going away. And I feel like as an organization and as a governing body, we gotta make a decision. What are we funding and what are we not? And if we're not raising mill levies, are we using another source to fund what it is we desire? Because we're gonna do our best this year to show you what we're doing. And if you don't wanna do it all, we'll dial it back. Cause that's, that may be how we have to reach the point where we're not raising the mill levy. But every time we talk about those cuts, you guys hear about it. There's just not a lot of room to cut into that six mill supporting $32 million of general fund. There's just not. But we can give it a whirl. And I think there's options there, Mayor, and, and we'll show them again. I, I can't seem to get through, and, and we struggle as a group, to get through the taxpayer what we are truly costing them as a city for the services we provide. That has been a challenge since day one of the last 21 years I've worked here.
But when they look at the, you know, the charts they're publishing, you know, they show the amount of money that we've been spending, it has been steadily going up. I think some of the charts say over 10 years, 268%. And they look at that and say, hey, that's, that's obscene as far as a number. And, you know, we keep doing that with the enterprise funds and everything. You know, every year it's 3%, 5%. Salaries aren't going up 3% and 5%. And so that, that's the dilemma. I don't know how to sell that to anybody to say, hey, you know, we have to raise this to make it work. And, and I realize that, you know, you wanna fund certain things, and you've got, you know, money that comes in, property tax, sales tax, eco-devo. And yeah, how do you slice and dice it? And maybe you have to rely on some of those other funds. But, you know, property tax is easier to project because you can, you know, you, you basically know what that is. And the sales tax is, is a wild card.
And it is why, it is why 25 to 35% are being recommended by our financial advisors to have setting aside. Cause you don't rely on property taxes to fund this operation. It's a clear recognition, you're relying on a revenue stream that is very unpredictable. And when you put government in a role of relying on unpredictable revenue streams, we subject ourselves. So.
I, I think your four bullets there, you know, are exactly what we need to focus on. Just the idea is, I, I don't know where we start that from. Like, like most budgets, you know, over the past 10 years, it's always been presented, we gotta increase it, you know, starting with six mills, and then we whittle it down. And it would be nice this year to say, okay, we're starting at flat. And what does that mean? And that may mean exactly what you've said, that if we start it flat, that means this doesn't happen, this doesn't happen, this doesn't happen. And that may be the only way to sell it.
And, and that's, that's what we'll show you. Because for the last several months, we've worked not only realizing where we're at with COVID, but, and this is where the five of you really have to get paid to do your job. This is the hardest part of what you have to do, in my opinion. Because the 32 million, the eight or nine, the nine departments, you gotta pick where not to fund. What are you cutting back? The across-the-board stuff, people are leaving. The, the, do this to everybody. Mm-mm. It's not gonna be, a lot of this OEI is about that. And it is about coming to a priority and funding the priority. And fund the people, and fund the program, and fund it well. So we'll do it well. Trying to stretch this thing out over an organization suggests all things are equal, that we do all things. And you've got some people, even in this organization, that don't believe that. And it really creates morale issues. So we have the challenge. Where, if you're not gonna increase, where are you cutting? And that's, that's why the strategic plan is in motion. That's why we're here talking about the things we are. Cause it's a tough, tough decision. And you gotta come up with that top tier, and you gotta come up with the bottom tier, and you gotta go to the bottom tier if you're not willing to raise the revenues.
Yeah, I agree with that, Jason, 100%. I think last year, I did write a paper that said, here's where I would put the priorities. And as a commission, we need to be thinking along those lines if we really wanna make this work. But the idea, like you say, everybody takes 10%. I've never seen that be effective any place I've worked, so I agree with you 100%.
Jason, this is Commissioner Eddy. I think, you know, we, we do need to hear you out and all the department heads and build that comprehensive picture about the positions that were not filled, whether through attrition or whatever it might be, and because of budget. And also remember that RCPD is completely funded by property taxes. So regardless of sales tax, we have to fulfill that obligation. And their costs have also gone up recently. So that's something also to consider. 21 million, ours is an 18 million dollar obligation to them. But I think that's the, the picture as far as transient guest tax. We've already had businesses come to us and say, transient guest tax is low, can you give us money out of economic development? So we need to be cautious on all of these budget conversations, but get the full comprehensive picture when we have that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree about not piecemealing and letting some go through and say, oh yeah, we wanna do that. We need to consider it as a whole and not have the surprise or the special groups who, who have received some money. I mean, I, I agree, I wanna see the, the agencies, you know, reveal the money that they have received from other sources. Because that should lessen our, their dependence on us. And so I, anyway, that's enough. Thanks.
Had us all here. Yeah, the, when, we never figured, five, seven, eight, nine years ago, that we'd ever have a drop in sales tax. This was a skyrocketing thing. It's never going down. And then the transient guest tax seems like a great place to fund things when we're all in high cotton and people are showing up 70, 50,000 people on the weekend for football games and the hotels and stuff. And we never, I never, nobody ever figured it's like, 40% cut, holy crap. Okay, state sending their students home, 45% university fund cut. Yeah, the ideas of those things happening just never really, I don't, nobody I've, I've talked to ever figured that there'd be a kind of a big drop off like that. So there, yeah, there has to be, yeah, we have to, now that that's happened, we have to kinda keep that in our thinking. It's like, okay, yeah, this seems like a good idea, but it is not as guaranteed as we thought it was. And that's, that's been the real issue here is that it, yeah, we, it just, what we thought was a stable source of income, we suddenly realized it's not as stable as we thought. And so, yeah, it's, and I don't know what the deal, I, I think I'm gonna have to start carrying my property tax statement that I get from the county around and just point out, like, okay, 45% of it went to the schools, 35% of it went to the county, and here's 20, yeah, this, this part of the city's went to, to the police department. Here you go. So it's, it's, that's the only way that, yeah, people might sort of start figuring out that, yeah, we're the sort of the Johnny come latelys to the property tax feed trough. The school district has helped themselves to the big part of it with all these $100 million bond issues, which people voted for and wanted, but they, then they don't realize that somebody's gotta pay for it, and it's them. And at the expense potentially of their parks and recreation programs and things like that. So that's, I guess we'll just have to keep harping about that to people and letting them know, yeah, that's, it's a trade-off. You wanted new and great schools, well, that, that means that you're either gonna pay more property taxes, or you're not gonna get these other things. And, and 10% of the people will figure that out, and everybody else will still stand there looking dumbfounded at you.
Yeah, one of the things that for folks listening out there, our finance department did a great job of, on the finance page, you can go in and put the value of your house, and it will show you exactly where your money goes. How much goes to the county, the city, the school district, and I think the state even takes a little bit. And, and it lays it right out for you. And I found that to be a very valuable asset. I mean, that's, that's great. There's a lot of good things on the city website, but, but people don't always avail themselves to it. And so it's important to do that. And then you'll have a better appreciation for where the money gets divvied up.
Thank you for the comments. I think we're ready for CIP.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Kristin Dolph, Management Assistant. I was given the task of tackling the CIP. I'm new to taking on these type initiatives in our office. So I worked with Jared and the finance department, kind of similar in following what Jason said. This is an incremental process. CIP is a little bit different because some of these initiatives we have here pertain more to our internal process. And then some of it also comes back to the commission and talking about dedicated funding sources. But just to kinda give some background, why this came to the top of something that was part of OEI is just our current procedures in working with the CIP has just, for lack of a better word, kind of become outdated or inefficient. We really don't have a true multi-year CIP planning process. It ultimately turns into what can the current budget fund in a one-year thing that is redone each year. So in order to get to the goal of having this long-range planning tool, we need to start making incremental steps now. So rather than spending countless hours trying to whittle down this list of projects and equipment, we wanna start using our strategic plan to come in and create initiatives and a focus for this planning process. And then creating out of those initiatives and ones created throughout the organization, direction and prioritization, and how we determine which projects go above others. But this really also comes down as to having the money for that. So one of the items on here is having a dedicated revenue source for general fund CIP projects. Don't really have an idea of on that. That's something to come in the future. Like I said, this is a long-term, five-year plan that we kind of put together. But we have as our vision is this bold up here is to create a robust capital improvements process. We, like I said, define strategic initiatives that give us this long-term planning document. So the first thing is more of an internal, but we want to establish a CIP committee. So this is something that we would like to take on doing now internally. Ideally, this committee would be comprised of our big CIP departments, so likely Parks and Rec and Public Works are gonna have representation on it. These are all ideas with some administration on there. And they will be doing the bulk of the work in kind of putting this together, but creating a prioritization matrix. A lot of these ideas, we pulled from the city of Lawrence. And then we have a new staff accountant who came from Wichita that provided a lot of insight in how that city handles their CIP. But the idea behind it is essentially to have different weighted criteria depending on if you have outside funding sources or... or this is part of a long-term project that's gonna be multiple as opposed to a standalone project. But creating those different type of criteria. But essentially getting it down to spending this one committee, spending the staff time to put this recommendation together, which would ultimately come to the commission. Part of that committee's charge would also be, like I was saying, prioritization criteria. But we need to start making these changes now. In the future, this would tie directly into the strategic plan initiatives. But rather than waiting until we have those, we want to start planning now for the 2022 CIP, which realistically, we start next month in gathering CIP projects. So we're gonna make changes internally to start making that incremental step forward and kind of just changing how departments think about their general-funded CIP projects to kind of get them accustomed to using a different type of prioritization. And then the last one is the dedicated funding sources. So we currently have the Equipment Reserve Fund for Vehicles. The idea is to create something specific just for CIP projects out of the general fund. This not only creates the ability to truly have long-term planning, but also to be able to provide the dollar amount earlier on in the process, so we know what we're actually working with, rather than kind of just this guessing game that we whittle down throughout the process. So this one is more of a, kind of like a scaffolding of this is the idea, this is where we want to be. We don't have specifics as of yet of what these criteria are necessarily going to be. Obviously, there are some that stick out, safety, health, wellness, those types of things. But, and then the dedicated funding sources, that is definitely something that will be brought back to the commission in the future to have those discussions to go about and discuss that idea and how to handle it. But that's kind of the ultimate goal, is to have that built into the budgeting process. So we have those funds there, so we can truly plan this out, rather than just working year by year. Oh gosh, yes.
Commissioner Hassel here. Is the, is the Equipment Reserve Fund, is that a property tax line item?
It is not. So the, if you recall, that was kind of a new thing we established for the Equipment Reserve Fund, and we funded it completely out of utility reserves. So we've already done some of the aspects of how do we reduce the annual impact pact on our financing, but still accomplish some things. And so we went to a lease purchase component. But every year, that existing lease payment keeps going up. So there's less money available in principle to fund new stuff. So that's only good, you know, if it's a one- or two-year type strategy to get you there. So there's, there's different aspects, you know, I think Riley County and others, they, they do a, you know, when, when everybody goes down and fills up the gas, you know, they do a surcharge by department. And, and a lot of those revenues go into a sinking fund, if you will, for, for establishing that. That's one method of putting money in there, as well as, you know, we are gonna take a half-mill or a quarter-mill or whatever and put it into this and X amount of sales tax, and just come up with different varieties of revenue to feed this, you know, some of the special funds. So if you get enough of those put together and you can afford to give them up, then you can create maybe a robust fund. But our robust fund in the past is as you stipulated, it's been the sales tax, it's been the excess sales tax that yearly was well above what we budgeted. And that created those excess funds that we could utilize to invest in new equipment and projects. And those just haven't materialized in the last five years.
Looks like we're up to Dennis.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Dennis Marstall, Assistant City Manager. The next topics I get to, I get to speak with you about is really kind of the heart of our OEI initiative. This is really where we're talking about our people. We're talking about pay with performance evaluation component, and we're also talking about benefits in these two sections. And so really, if you remember, when we came back to you basically a year ago, we said our organizational excellence initiative is really about how can the city of Manhattan be an employer of choice? We talked a lot this year with the Chamber of Commerce about talent recruitment, talent attraction, but also keeping talent in our community. And so we look around and we see that people are interested in maybe going to more metropolitan areas, Kansas City, Wichita, other areas. What are we doing to help keep people here? Well, this also is where we're looking as city administration, what can we do to attract a city workforce to deliver the excellent services that we want to provide and that we are providing, although we are feeling stretched in many cases? So really talking about our people. And I think what you'll see today, and what hopefully you're hearing from our theme today, is we really want to foreshadow for you where we see these points being down the road. We've given a thought about five years. And so there are some things that we have to do this year, or even in '22, that has to be built upon. And we have to know going into this year and '22, that there's gonna be some things that will build on that we want to get to in 2025. And so when we say we want to invest in our people, we want to make sure we're demonstrating and keeping that commitment by some investments we make now that will lead to more investments in the future. So for example, we're talking about the pay and the performance evaluation, basically it's around 2014, when we last did a pay study. That was a fine thing, that was great, but we never acted on it. And so we still have employees in this organization who were told back then that they are in job classifications or positions that aren't keeping up with markets of competitive positions within the community or within the region, because we didn't do anything really with that pay study. So what we're saying now is knowing that the market's still changed since that time period, is we need to go ahead and look and see what is our market for this region, for the area, for government position, but also compare it to nonprofit, to a private sector. But let's look and see what is the pay study gonna tell us. And so we think that that's a first step. And that's why we are acknowledging that that is what would be a first step, this hopefully in '21. And then what would that lead to? Can we start addressing that pay study in '22, '23, and '24? And I know some thoughts that commissioners have had about how can we address a certain level of pay for employees or whatever. This will give the data that you may be looking for to make those decisions. So we think that's a key first step. And if you go on down, is really we also are very much into a performance-driven, we have evaluation system. But internally, we want to make that more robust and connect these specific job duties and functions to some specific outcomes and goals, that again, will ultimately lead back up to the strategic plan that we're gonna have information here within the next nine, nine months. So we really want to make sure that each employee can connect back to what we're gonna be doing with our strategic plan. But also, the important part of that is how can we then reward employees with a larger pay pool? We address underperforming employees, but we're not really able to really reward employees when we have these stellar employees who've been carrying the load when employment, other colleagues has gone down. So how can we reward some going forward? And if we don't start that process now, we'll never get there. So that's kind of the view that we're taking on the pay. But then really just making a whole pay-for-performance system. So that's what we're ultimately gonna be headed towards. And then when we look at benefits, the same thing, to be the employer of choice, what is kind of the new benefits package being offered? There's a lot of conversation around these days, paid time off in general versus just medical leave, vacation leave, whatever it may be, bereavement leave, is there just a paid time off pool? That sounds like something that we'll study in the future, that may be three or four years out. But really, when you specifically look at now, we see these employers who are offering 401K matches. You see employers who often maybe are offering graduation debt support payments. We have the education reimbursement. So we're looking at, let's, what is our overall package? What are we doing for benefits and how does that compare? So we want to take this next year and kind of do that benefits review, then also work with our employees and say, what are the benefits that are attractive to them? And then can we set up maybe in a benefit system where employees can kind of have the cafeteria plan to pick and choose? If I'm a young, recent college grad into the workforce, it may be more important for me to get a little support to pay off my student loans versus doing the initial sinking for retirement. Or I know I'm not gonna use the education reimbursement, because I just got my college degree, I don't want to get my ba, my masters or whatever it may be. Is there a way that we can develop a benefits program that may be able to be tailored to a person's station in life? So those are some things that we think can help make us the employer of choice, particularly in the Manhattan market. Also, then we think about, so the paid time off system will be one. And so we really just want to take the first step of evaluation and then see what cost could be. We do have the state capers retirement system, but are we seeing now other competitive employers are also doing matches outside of their defined benefit plan? If a employee contributes, will the employer match some percentage or whatever it may be? So really just getting the understanding of are we competitive in the benefits marketplace? And again, we just need that baseline information. So you'll hear some more about this in where Commissioner Ready, where you asked, how will you know what is not being done, or how will we know what's not getting done? You will see a lot of that from the department head meeting on Tuesday, and we sent out the PowerPoint early on last Thursday, I believe, for you to start getting a heads up on what you're gonna hear on Tuesday from department heads. But these two areas of pay and benefits, you will hear the department heads talking a lot about on Tuesday night, is really where we see we've got to make that investment. And if we don't make a commitment to that now, that will, that will impact if employees want to stay here and make the city of Manhattan their long-term employer. Any questions?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Ready. I have, Dennis, I have a question. I was here in 2014, I think, with the payroll study that I believe McGrath conducted.
Yep.
You said we haven't kept up with it. I thought we have. The only time I remember us not doing a pay increase or COLA was 2020 for, for this year, for the, but in the previous years, I felt like we were at least keeping up with, with the merit pay or whatever pay schedule we were following, as well as COLA. So why have we not followed that? That, that's why it was there.
Yeah, there, there were several recommendations as part of that study. The one that we did implement was we had individuals making a wage that didn't even meet the minimum of the recommended, of the recommended pay study, pay scale. So we moved up, I think it was close to twenty, twenty-five individuals that moved up to at least the minimum. The remainder implementation had a price tag that was significant. It was over two million dollars. And the strategy that she laid out was trying to get employees by year five to seven to a midpoint of the pay range. If you were able to accomplish that, then you would provide a structure that was encouraging for new employees to come on board, recognizing they would get to that midpoint by year seven, let's say. It would also encourage those who had been here to get beyond the midpoint and reward for that tenure of service, which you see play out in a lot of organizations to be competitive. To do that was substantial for the organization in the realm of one and a half, two million dollars. So we, we didn't approach that. The next few years of budget seasons, it just wasn't attainable. We kept doing the three and a half, four percent increases, three, three and a half, for, for a number of years there. Commissioner, you're right. But we didn't take that leap to really correct that midpoint. The union at the fire department, they have taken this strategy. We've given them a little bit more flexibility in terms of a lump sum. So they would get the three and a half percent, and then they would look at their entire membership and all their positions, and they would approach that funding. So there is a segment of the, the group, the, the workers at the city that have done that, but it, it hasn't been across the board.
I felt if we, even at that time, I believe Commissioner McCullough was here at the time as well, as well as Commissioner Butler, to show fidelity to the, to the study, so that, because if they do a study now, it's not gonna be any better. It's gonna be even more costly. So should we just stay with that study and at least try to do what was recommended before we try to do? Because that costs money too, I think a hundred fifty thousand or something like that for a consult.
So we, we researched a pay study, it, it's in the thirty-thousand-dollar range. We would really like to do it this fall to then prepare ourselves for the '23 budget discussion. I don't think we could get it done right now and have it germane to the conversation that we're gonna have for the '22 budget. It would just be too quick of a turnaround, plus we've got our own challenges in HR and finance right now, that putting that on top of them is just not manageable. So it's more than likely would be a fall thing. We feel like we can get through it in the fall, spend about thirty thousand dollars to, it would need updated. It just, it just would. And even what Victoria did, McGrath did at the time, was a tough pill to swallow financially. So it's difficult to go back to that study seven years later and say, that's, that's where we're at. There's, there's just been a lot of change in that seven-year period, not only in Manhattan, but the comparable cities that you go out to, the municipalities. So we like to take a look at what they're doing as well and see where our ranges are.
No, I understand. I just feel like if we couldn't keep up last time, I don't know, I feel like if it was two million last time, it's gonna be four million this time.
Well, it'd be nice to know for one, but two, if it's a multi-year strategy, it's a multi-year strategy. And I, I think we envisioned that would be. It's, it's a lot to ask, obviously, to raise that much in revenue in a given year to pay your people. There's also strategies on how we could unfold that. And some of you have even made comments about there are certain ranges that you're much more comfortable in raising that wage than, than all of them. And, okay, so let's be strategic on how we're approaching this to create the environment that we'd like to see in the organization. And, and that would take multiple years.
And we did want to highlight one of the interests, pay study given our own seven-year gap here, but also the RCPD is doing a pay study, and they've contracted with their pay study consultant over five years. So that will help them keep on track, on path, is the initial thought. But they should be getting their results back, I think, this spring summer from their pay study.
Victoria McGrath did their study as well, so.
The current one? The current one?
I think the McGrath study was also, yeah.
Yeah, the current one, the one they have that will be completed this summer and then through the next five years, I think is a different group.
All right, thank you.
Jason, this is Aaron. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, I mean, I, I think I'm one of the commissioners that has talked about if we're going to do, and this is above all the priorities for me, I'm, I'm almost along in the similar thoughts as Commissioner Ready, in that I want to see us start closing that gap, in the same way that the, Jason talked about the firefighters. A decade ago, when I was on the school board, we started this process because the, the teachers in them, in 383 were, we were losing talented teachers to neighboring areas, because our wage floor, the, the entry level for our teachers was so much different than Junction City. We started phasing that in, we did the multi-year plan. Over five, six years now have passed since that began, and we're, we're retaining teachers. The teachers are, entry-level teachers are competitive with the region, if not better than most of the region. And that was a, took a lot of, lot of work and planning and commitment to the employees. But if, it sounds like we could have started this six years ago for the city as well, we haven't. I don't want to wait another year to start, but I do think we need to put some money into the tier approach. So looking at that lower level, where those gaps are among the lower schedule of the income, or the pay schedule, is really an important part. Waiting on the pay study to come in, I understand it needs to be updated, but I'd like to see some action there in closing that gap. So that's a priority for me, just wanted to weigh in.
I, I appreciate that, Aaron, and I think it's something we can talk about internally and, and bring back some recommendations for you all. I don't think it would be extremely difficult for us to look at certain ranges within our pay scale and see if, if we can start to make some headway on reaching that midpoint quicker. The fire department really was struggling. They were losing a, a lot of firefighter ones, firefighter twos to metro areas. And they started ramping that up and became competitive again. They want to remain competitive, they don't want to lose that ground, and last year we obviously, but we weren't the only ones. You know, city of Manhattan wasn't the only one that kind of held the, the line with COVID. You've just got a lot of anticipation and anxiousness about, let's get back to where we, we need to be, to be competitive. The training, the turnover, the, the The training, the turnover, the, the lack of familiarity, it does stretch throughout the organization and even into the services we provide. And when you lose quality people and people move on after you've trained them, you invest a whole nother set of resources back into those new hires. They're great people. They work hard and we'd like to keep the ones that we have trained that are doing a good job. So that, you know, repetitive of where Dennis was, but that's kind of the goal.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Jared Wassinger, Assistant to the City Manager. Dennis really kicked off those major OEI initiatives with pay and benefits for our employees. Other big areas is really workplace environment. I've been working on Ron to get the, the nap pods and the recliners like they have at Civic Plus, but they, they haven't made the CIP yet, so we're going to go a different route. No, really workplace environment was a big issue from our employees that we were hearing during the process about beyond just the paycheck that they get. Employees want to come to an area that's safe, that they have the resources available to do their job in a safe way and an efficient way. Those are things that employees look at when, when they're looking for jobs in other areas as well. It's not only pay, it's, it's the resources that are provided to those individuals to get the job done, whether it's equipment, technology, work hours and work-life balance is, is another big issue. I've put together this kind of list here of some of the more general workplace environment areas that we've been discussing. Work hours was a big thing. I think one of the maybe blessings of this last eight months is we realized that we could do work outside of the normal eight to five hours at City Hall or other satellite facilities. This definitely isn't the case for a lot of our operational crews, but it is, you know, for some of our office employees. So understanding that there is different ways for the work hour to occur, we even talk about that with our operational crews of, you know, our street crews working in the summer, maybe eight to five isn't the best when it's 100 degrees out. Maybe it's easier to, to come in at 6:00 AM and get those work done, that work done in the cool hours. So we've been taking, you know, some opportunities to talk to our departments, to our divisions, to figure out the best ways to get work done in the most efficient manner that also, you know, pleases and assists our employees during the process to ensure that the same work product is, is getting done. So we'll be looking at, you know, exploring more of those options as we go about these next couple of years. Our personnel policy and procedure manual is about 500 pages. I think we give every new employee a copy right when they start with the city. It's quite a lot to digest. It's a culmination of multiple policies on how we operate as an organization and rules for our employees that they need to follow, that we need to update. That's one of those things that's been on the back burner because it takes time and resources, short of monetary resources to pay other, you know, HR firms to, to really tackle those things. You guys know all of the items that we're working on, on a weekly basis during our legislative meetings that our city attorneys are reviewing, our HR professionals are reviewing and finance staff. So it's difficult for us to, to really create that overhaul with that policy manual. We're looking for those consistencies and, and easily digestible understandings of what it means to be an employee in the organization and following those rules and guidelines. City facilities is a big one, you know, can't thank the city commission enough for giving the go-ahead for the joint maintenance facility. That's one workplace environment that's a physical area that we noticed, you know, have noticed for a long time that is inadequate and out of date. Other facilities come into mind across parks and recreation that haven't gotten those improvements over time. When, when Kristen talks about the capital improvement program, you know, a, a project in city park or a new roadway is competing right now with getting adequate facilities at our cemetery shop for our employees. That's where it, it becomes difficult for us to really look at that dollar and find those prioritizations because those are some of the things often that are, the public doesn't see, but it really has an effect on how we operate. So understanding, you know, the, the full breadth of the facility upgrades that we need over time, keeping up to date with even things like HVAC upgrades are, are, are competing with other areas in our operating budget. And it sometimes it gets to a point where we just have to wait until it breaks before we can fix it because there are so many other needs in the organization. Want to give you a little update on the technology in our IT department division. We, for the longest time, IT was within our finance department. It really spurred from, you know, the, the old ways of IT, which was to help the organization continue to run efficiently so people could do their jobs. We have our network issues. We have the hardware that our 400 employees are using, whether it's printers, computers, iPads out in the field. That technology, our, our servers that are hosting all of our data and files. We have our phone systems, our, our email systems, which is hundreds of thousands of emails that we're, we're saving on our server. And then our financial operating system, our, our legacy I series that is about 30 years old and in many areas is obsolete that we're looking to upgrade. But we understand and you all understand that citizens, as well as us employees, are looking to do business in more efficient ways through technology. Some of that is difficult right now, very difficult when you think of things like online payments, online forms that cannot tie to our existing financial operating system. So we struggle there. So those are, you know, the, the processes that we've realized, other departments are wanting to do more things through technology that we don't have the staff or the resources to do. Recently, we relocated our IT division within the city manager's office so it could have that elevated centralized focus over the organization to help our departments and to help our residents do business with the city more efficiently. So over the next year, we're really going to go through a strategic planning process with the IT division. We're going to probably look to the strategic plan, maybe to see where the one that we're doing and planning next to see any desires that are of the community when it comes to services. But also, we're going to work with each department to understand what are their priorities over the next few years. We're kind of going to go through this run, grow, transform model to really develop missions, goals and strategies for our IT division. And over time, it could become its own department if we can add additional resources and additional staff to help that out. A big process that we're going to be undertaking, the IT division, along with mainly the finance department, is to upgrade our ERP, our financial operating system. This year, we're going to do some research, figure out what this entails. This isn't one of those, you know, if you think it's taken a long time for us to upgrade the AV room, this is going to take a lot longer to really transition from beginning to end the, the financial operating system. So we're going to start doing that research this year, looking at, at what it's all going to take and then hopefully making a financial decision in the 2022, 2023 year to make that switch, which could last a long time. After that, that's when we can start looking at all of these areas that we want to improve the organization when it comes to technology. Tying all of our assets to an asset management software that can link to our financial operating system, looking at things like online payment programs, online forums that all comes together into one system to make it really more efficient for staff and citizens. And then what comes with that is, is, you know, looking at additional IT staffing, whether it becomes its own department, whether we merge other departments. Technology doesn't just stop in our IT division. Vivian is our communications PIO, working with technology daily. We have GIS analysts throughout our organization. So we're really looking for this IT division to grow into a department that can really serve the organization and we can start doing some really cool and innovative things. Part of that comes with money. So like the equipment reserve fund, like a capital improvement fund, other cities take a model of creating a technology reserve fund, figuring out a funding source for those things. You can use savings through other technology purchases on an annual basis to build those things up and then finding other funding sources so we can make some of these improvements so that it doesn't become such a big bogey in certain areas, you know, each year in the general fund. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about workplace environment or technology. And then I know Vivian's going to wrap up with talking a little bit about communication.
This is Commissioner Ready. Jared, thank you. I have a question for you. The technology improvements that happened here in City Hall, was that from CARES funds?
Yeah, we did use that with Spark Funds. For a while, we were tracking a lot of those expenses because we knew that they were going to be reimbursed. And then we were able to kind of take the, that fund from the fire money and put that into the general fund. So yeah, CARES funds technically did pay for this, these upgrades.
How much was?
How much was it?
How much was it? How much did it take?
It was a $63,000 upgrade.
Keep in mind, as I mentioned, this city manager Ron Fear, the, that long list of reimbursables that, that were CARES Act eligible. Also remember that, you know, when we originally asked Riley County for money, we asked for just under 10 million. Some of that, they took care of with help to businesses and, and that sort of thing. But our list was pretty substantial. And so we still have those lists of eligible funds that because we did do the, the 2.8 million, which is the bulk of what we got from Riley County, really reimbursed our general fund for the fire department. That was the easiest way to do it, simple record-keeping. But all of those other CARES Act components are still there. So if we get additional CARES Act and we can go back to the previous calendar year for reimbursements, we'll still have ability to get reimbursements. And, and I think, I think there'll be some that, that will happen with.
I do think the pandemic has showed us how reliant we are on technology. And if you have something that's 30 years old, we saw how, saw how that worked in the Kansas Department of Labor. It fails when you need it. So I think that's something we do need to look at investing in because it's, that's the only way everything's going to go forward is with technology. So I, I appreciate the information. And if we get more CARES money, certainly we need to invest in it. But I think that's one place where we do need to do a huge upgrade. Otherwise, we will be suffering in the long run.
Yeah, one of the things that the city commission actually did approve back in the last meeting in December was the, the switch to using three, Office 365, Microsoft throughout the entire organization, which is really going to kind of be that first step to grow kind of what we're currently doing. You know, right now, we're all working with, with desktop applications and email. We're going to be able to utilize Microsoft Teams, a lot of other areas with OneDrive and SharePoint that's going to be cloud-based, that'll really make project management, task management across the organization a lot more efficient. Many things that you'll even see that we'll hopefully be able to do here in the future. Even the difficulty of you guys having to log into the website to download a packet, we can get you guys, you know, a OneDrive to where you can turn on your computer, log in and you don't have to wait, waste time downloading that information and you have the most, you can have access to all the past mail folders that you've, you've been looking at and you'll really be kind of a part of our server in a way.
I think another, this city manager Ron Fear, another example, and I appreciate the commission's support for our voice-over IP transition of our phone system, which was antiquated and we were buying replacement parts on wherever we could find it. That, in this pandemic, allowed us that modern system, basically one of the, we were able to take the funds we were paying for individual telephone lines and utilize that to pay for our debt service on the new phone system. So it was, it was a little bit higher cost, but one of the other advantages, for example, is we're easily, this, this is, the system is compatible with some other components that basically facilitated employees working from home by transferring that number that rings at their desk at City Hall to actually ring either on their home phone or on their mobile phone. So it was a great improvement for us and a benefit, so we appreciate it.
I wanted to ask, the system, are you still using the AS400?
We are. Yeah, AS400 I series.
Yeah.
We are still utilizing that.
I support getting away from that. I support an upgrade. It's history.
Yeah, even, you know, we brought on a lot of new finance staff and, and their, you know, eyes kind of get pretty big when we show them some of these things that, that we're still doing. So I know Rena and her staff are really anxious to, to move forward with that too, once they're staffed up and ready to take on that.
I also know it's expensive, so the sooner we bite it off.
Yeah, it is a little expensive.
Sooner we bite it off in chunks, the better, so. Because all at once is formidable.
As those systems become more and more antiquated, the support for those systems becomes difficult as well. And, and there's quite a few folks still around in the company that is, but that company gets sold and that, that online help be, becomes more difficult. The other thing that we've been very blessed with over the years are really talented people that have the ability to create these new programs and, and help us be more efficient. But when they move on, that system they created and knew how to work the bugs out of, nobody else knows. So that's been part of our, our history as well.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I'm Vivian Ucello, the Public Information Officer for the city of Manhattan. Nice to see you again. I've been kind of gone for a while. And I am here to talk to you a little bit about communications and the role. I hope communications can fill moving forward. The OEI initiative identified a lack of consistent and thoughtful communication as one of the most significant problems for, for the organization. And over this past year, as I've been absent working on COVID response, which, thank you very much for allowing me to do that important work, it really brought a lot of attention to the fact that one person in this role really is not adequate to serve the needs of the organization. And some of the current practices, which have kind of presented barriers to good external and, good internal and external communication include lack of staff, lack of staff time to complete the tasks and kind of a lack of a really good organized system of regular communications on a large scale to help unify all of the different departments and divisions of the city. We have a, a wide variety of staff roles and even just workplace locations in the city. We kind of joke about that from the airport to the zoo. But as you look at the, the size of the organization and all of the different moving pieces, getting to a point where, where we have a really unified and recognizable voice in the community is going to take some work. External communications, which provide just a vital role, both for giving residents a path to participate in local government, get vital updates about their utilities, about public works, projects, about safety, and then also just putting them in touch with those resources to improve their quality of life. It, it's going to require a big effort and I'm sorry to kind of stand in front of you and advocate for, for more spending in this area, but I feel like that's, that's what I have to do. We currently, as I said, have one public information officer with no support staff positions. The Parks and Recreation Department has three dedicated marketing professionals who, who fill really specific roles and focus mostly on external communication about programs and services. The Foyne Hills Discovery Center, Sunset Zoo and Parks and Rec each have their own marketing person. But other departments such as like the airport, the fire department, public works, they have some staff who fulfill those communication roles as part of their duties. Jesse Roma, the airport director, is also in charge of communications and that's, that's a lot to ask for one staff person. So they, they can fulfill those roles as time allows and as the situation demands. And then some communications roles are really loosely defined and not really an official part of anybody's job description, but somebody in the part, in the department who's kind of good at this or that will step up and have to kind of fill those roles. So we also don't have a comprehensive strategic marketing plan in place or brand guidelines to kind of unite all those different departments in the city. or brand guidelines to kind of unite all those different departments in the city. I've, we've had draft plans in the, in the past, a few different points over the years. And some specific departments have pretty robust plans for their own facility, like, like the Discovery Center has their own brand and marketing plan. But there hasn't been staff time or resources available to really make a comprehensive plan for, for the whole city. So some of the steps I would like to take that I highlighted in the, the graph are to have an incremental approach. So right now, recognizing we can't just materialize a department out of thin air. We don't have the resources to do something like that. I want to start by identifying those people who've been serving communication roles within their department and bring them together, give them some support, training, and guidance. And then make those communication duties an official part of their job description so they have regular expectations. If that person leaves, the duties can, can be incorporated in the job description of the new hire or however we, we end up working that out. But just create an official framework to make sure that these tasks, tasks are taken care of. And then next steps, of course, I'd love to hire. Like, we, we've got enough work for, for several positions. And I'd like to have an approach to start creating a division for communications. Much like in the same ways Jared mentioned, technology serves the entire organization. Finance serves the entire organization. Communication is, is vital. From everything, from commission meetings, legislative actions, to recently, there was a neighborhood near Anthony Middle School where water had to be turned off for water line repair. They, the crew encountered some unforeseen problems. And the repairs lasted well beyond the time that was communicated to local residents that the work would be complete and water would be on. It's really difficult, especially for, for families. It's really difficult for anyone to have their water turned off. But as, you know, there's, there's one person in Public Works who has been tasked in my absence with kind of communicating with the public road closures and utility issues. She is an hourly employee and left at five. I'm away, and we had to find out how to tell these people, we're sorry, but your water's going to be off a little bit longer than we expected. We need some, some systems and infrastructure in place to be able to have those communications. We've got email, but I don't necessarily have email addresses for everybody in that neighborhood. We've got social media, we've got Nextdoor. But creating a system much like, you know, Evergy has, that if you look online, you can see where the power outages are, that sort of system for water and other utilities would be wonderful to have. So a lot of demands, a lot of things that we could do to improve communication, and hopefully some steps to take along the way to, to make it more palatable to make that happen. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Okay, good. I tried to make it quick.
Commissioners, that presents or concludes our formal presentations. I don't know if you want to take a little break before you start the next round?
Yep, sounds like a winner. We'll take, take about until 5:00 after on that clock.
That's too long. There's still three.
10 minutes is too much?
10 minutes is it?
I said by 3:00, I'm not.
Yeah.
Just 10. You should get up straight.
I should be there.
See if we can adjourn back and move into the next part. We're sort of on track here, which is great. And that was to discuss the City Commission goals for 2021. We've got a list here. It's got everybody's on there except mine, because I didn't send them to them. And that's why they're not on here. But why don't we just start at the top of the piece of paper that we were given and start with Mark? If that'll work for you. Did you get one of these? It's got your top five. Yours were, yours were focused and very simple.
Yeah, the, I'm not a big new idea, come up with new ways to send the government off in different directions. I'm just more interested in finding what's been kind of working and continuing moving in that direction. And so the big things for me are going to be, as much as possible, continue making progress in Addyville, which to me means, yeah, hopefully, continuing to move forward with the next block south on, on 12th Street potentially. And I don't know what the plans are, and I don't know how many millions of dollars that is going to be. But I would like this to, to keep at least talking that up to people and trying to get people excited about it and moving in that direction and thinking about it so that when the time comes to pull the trigger, people will understand what we're wanting to kind of accomplish there. And then hopefully, as the economy continues to improve, some of those vacant lots down there by the garage, new garage, will be able to start seeing some progress with something going up on those spots. And obviously, the airport and getting that 150 feet of runway approved through the FAA will be at the top of all of our lists to try to make sure that happens because that's way too expensive for us to try to fund ourselves unless we absolutely have to. And I know, I talked about the whole swimming pool. We don't have the expertise and the bodies and the manpower to, to maybe get all of the pools open. But I, we need to do as much as we can with what we have. Yeah, because even though life went on last year without the pools, that was a big, that's a big thing to ask people to continue to go without. Because they, people will end up going to, a few people will end up going to the out-of-town Clay Center, Westmoreland, Wamigo, I'm not sure about Junction City, what their pool situation was. But yeah, there's, we want to try to keep those people in town and getting people to come to town as best we can. And then I'd like to, yeah, see what, the summer sports, yeah, baseball, softball, soccer. At least try to do some kind of a, we may have to do a half-program. Yeah, if we said normally it would have 60 teams, maybe limit it to 30 or something that's more manageable, we can do with the staff we have or something, first come, first served. Sorry after that, kind of a, perhaps that might be a way to go where to get some of those programs, but maybe not to the scale we've, we did a couple of years ago. And I would like us to try to get some, at least some kind of a limited arts-in-the-park schedule for the summer. If it's one to start the summer off, one to middle of the summer, and one to kind of end the summer so that we have that opportunity. Because there's been so few things that people can kind of go to. And hopefully, on an outdoor environment like that, people would feel comfortable going out. Because I, I think that would be very helpful and help encourage people to get out and do some things. And then on the second, on following up that is the just, if, if, if people want to have outdoor summer music. And then on the second, on following up that is the just, if, if, if people want to have outdoor summer music festivals or something in the parks and such, I think, I would like us to try to support those as opposed to trying to squash those and just give as much support as reasonable that we would normally give to events like that, I would like us to encourage that to happen if at all possible.
Okay, good, good list. I concur with all those. I don't see a problem with, with us integrating those into some document once we get done. And I think some of the other ones may have had something similar. So is Commissioner ready if you'd like to cover your points?
Sure. So I had five. First one is a plan on how to use the current economic development funds. So since the sales tax passed and we won't be really collecting that until 2023, we're gonna get a lot of requests probably for the current economic development funds. So I want us to have some kind of a plan for the next two years on how to utilize it best. And if we don't need to, we don't need to, it probably go, continue to move forward with it also beyond 2023, I would assume. But we have about, I think, $6 million in there, six or eight million dollars. And figure out what it, if we have a plan for those, how are we going to utilize them? And if there's already a plan in place, I, I'm not aware of it, so I would like to know more about that. Number two is work with community partners such as Kansas State University, Fort Riley, and the Chamber of Commerce to develop benchmarks to, for economic vitality. Since there's decreases in enrollment and budget cuts in higher education, deployment at Fort Riley and business shifts in our community, how do we pave a path forward? I don't know what's gonna happen in Topeka, but it doesn't look very good right now as far as funding for higher education. The enrollment has been decreasing consistently for the past four or five years. I don't see that going upward, the trend going upward in the next two or three years at least, and they've already made some cuts. So I want us to, we just talked about relying on sales tax. What does that look like? Being realistic about it. If it's bad, we need to know it's gonna be bad and not be pretending like it's not. And then how do we go from there? What are our next steps? How do we see this? And that's gonna take community effort. We're talking to the leadership in all of those agencies. Three, implement recommendations from Planning Next for the strategic plan. I know they're here online with us at our meeting this evening. But if they're gonna present a plan or recommendations in the six months, I want us to take it seriously and not just put it on a shelf and consider what we're hearing from our city staff today and mesh those with what Planning Next is gonna give. I want us to be very focused. My number four is gonna speak to this. Support staff and city operations during recovery and budget constraints due to COVID. But I want us to focus, my focus this year is going to be more on internal operations and staff and technology, communications, everything we heard now. Because I think we, I feel we've pushed those aside. And if we keep pushing it aside anymore, we will not be able to survive the good community that we want to be. And that's gonna impact business recruitment and retainment of employees, not just for the city, but in general, whether it's with the school district or anything else. So I want us to focus a lot more on internal operations and staff. Five, frequent legislative updates from Topeka regarding issues across the board that impact our residents and the city. The election year is gonna be this year and next year, so people are working on different items. And I, and some of them are, they're moving really fast on, so I want to know what that means for our city budget and for our residents, whether it's with property taxes, whether it's with broadband, whether it's with different types of licensing for businesses, whatever it might be. Because it's moving so fast, I would like us to get more updates on that as much as possible. I don't know if that falls on Decarter or one of our city staff or the league of, the Kansas League of Municipalities. But they're gonna end here pretty soon, and oftentimes I don't know what's going on, and it's too late. So if we need to put out statements, it's good to have a heads up on what that might be. Thank you.
Right, and I guess Erin, you still with us out there on the Zoom thing?
Yeah, can you hear me all right?
Yes, you are. Yes, we can hear you. And I guess you have a copy of your own, own list. If you want to go over those, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I'll just kind of, you can read, but we, we addressed the OEI earlier. And, you know, that's again a top priority with actually a goal of getting to closing that gap and looking to make sure that we have that lower tier at least on track with some, with some money actually coming towards them. That would be ideal. Got to get that, close that gap for that workplace improvement, competitive wages, benefits, those type of things. So I'm on board there. But continuing with the housing, we, we've been working, making progress there. Budgeting, this is where we're, the next two go hand in hand in my mind as far as the strategic plan being kind of merged with those priorities into budgeting so we can have multi-year, make, make some significant steps in budgeting, but also towards those goals with a roadmap of implementation, some wins, some successes in the next couple of cycles. Energy savings, that's kind of a carryover for me from last year. I want to, I think we, Jason has information on this. And whenever, whenever everybody gets tired talking about everything else, I, I'm always willing and wanting to get us to get this audit. I think it's been about a decade. It'd be good to have one every decade or so so we can incorporate those savings and plan out long term. But that's all I got.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Morris, your five points. Actually, I've got nine.
I just kept going. Mine are focused, but there are more of them. So let me just say it that way. I, I think we need to continue working aggressively to pursue the health, COVID health-related issues and coordinate with local governments. This isn't over, and it won't be over until at least summer if then. And there are major issues still to be, ways that perhaps the city, I don't know how the city can help. Whether we can send people with cones and perking attendance to some of these sites or, but we're not being asked to help. And I want the city to be a partner in whatever's happening here. But I have yet, I, I'm on the list. I, I was able to register for a vaccine because of my AIDS. But I, I don't want to go out there and stand for four or six hours. I want us to have an efficient process. And if the city can help with some, I don't know, five or six people or something, I, I want us to make the offer. I want to continue the mask ordinance until the population is safe from the pandemic, and I want to look to the CDC guidelines for that. We have to keep our city employees safe, bring city resources to that collaborative arrangement whenever we can, and resume city programs incrementally as the virus is brought under control. I think we should aggressively pursue COVID economic recovery efforts. Pursuing outside funding should, you know, would, and I know we're intent on that, and that has to be our, something we're dedicated to doing. But collaborating, working with non-governmental organizations and promoting a return to the vibrant economy that we had pre-COVID. And that means airport tourism, conference center, sports and recreation, whatever. We have to control the budget in relationship to revenue, and we know that revenue is down and has been. And that's going to be, make it more serious than it's probably ever been in any recent memory. We have to project 2022 revenue estimates, consider if any programs or expenses can be eliminated or reduced or split into phases. The, continue to the present level of support for basic social services currently, as currently funded. Better city commission analysis of the RCPD budget and county funding. It's not just RCPD, but the county has funding obligations too, and it's, it's a partnership. With regard to economic development, I think it's terribly important that we identify a new industrial or business park. And I know there, there's talk of that with the chamber and, and the county is gonna take a full effort. So that has to be a high priority for economic development. I want to reexamine our economic development priorities and maintain a transparency for citizens. I think that's important for them. They supported an economic development sales tax, and we need to be sure that the process is open. I'd like to encourage the county to become more engaged in economic development efforts. I don't see them at the table, very minimal. And so that there, they need to be, somehow we have, not just the city, the people in the community, the chamber, other people need to bring them further along. With regard to housing, I want to add more citizen input to this UDO. I think that is a big mystery to anybody in the community. And for, had, you know, it's been, what, two years? And if I say that, then I know there are citizens that say that. I would like to form an advisory committee to research and develop recommendations on the next steps and goals for funding for this, for house, this housing money we have, we'll have, and renew efforts to keep a database on rental registration. I don't believe that database is being maintained, and certainly not the web part. And I can report something that's a rental violation, and a year later, it's still not, I can't tell that from the webpage. Given the commission's support, if there's commission support, I still support a rental inspection program. And the housing quality is slipping, and it's COVID, and it's the economy, and it's all kinds of things. But I just, just to say that. With regard to flooding, and I think it's something we have to address. We must move on notification of the public for, of floodplain land in our city. We need to restrict development of flood-prone areas, and I believe we have been doing that. But maybe we need to think a little harder because then in 20 years, the water level will be higher than ever, and our houses that we allow to be built now will be inundated. So it seems to me things happen in increments of 20 and 30 years. We need to find funding to lessen the flooding on Wildcat Creek in the city limits and push the county to take mitigation measures in rural areas. And we need to continue to buy out flooded properties in order to improve the health and safety of our residents. We still have some properties that were flooded that have, we haven't bought out. So yes, we made a, a good, 2018 was the last flood we had on Wildcat Creek. But this is only 2020. We haven't completed our mission yet, which is to correct some of the things that were built 40 years ago and are now flooding. And that's the dilemma, dilemma we continue to face. Recreation, we have to find a way to handle the operational costs of the two recreation centers. And I, if, I hope, supporting the existing operations. I'd like to, we need to review the fee structure. I don't know. I know we've looked at them, but as those buildings open, suddenly it's gonna be seriercer, and we might have a renewed interest, especially as problems are pointed out. And the city commission should review the agreements with USD 383 for the two, use of the, of the recreation centers. I mean, that was probably a year and a half ago, 2017. It's been a while. And so here we are, opening them in this coming year, and we need to address it. With regard to the pools, I'd like to keep all three pools open during the summer and maintain the other recreation programs. You know, this is a wish list right now for swimming pools. And, but I'd like to keep them open from Memorial Day to Labor Day, which is what our community expects, and we just have a hard time delivering. And I'd like to look carefully at the pool revenue from fees versus the overall expenses. I'd like to resolve the topless ordinance prior to opening the pools, and that's gonna be Memorial Day weekend. In a miscellaneous, and as I have looked at the other commissioners' lists, I, I would add some things to miscellaneous, but these are the ones that I thought of. We need to continue, well, I did say social services earlier. I'd like to discourage flashing digital signs and, and enforce the brightness of digital signage. And enforcement is something that has been missing in our current flashing light or bright light scenario. I'd like to continue to develop quality public art. I would ask, I mean, we need transparency. I understand the, I understood that this new room would improve the options for citizens' comments and not shut them out. And it's too easy to sweep those comments aside when they're electronic and you don't even get a chance to look at them before you come to a meeting because they came at 4:30 and we meet at 6:00. I'm just saying, it's clumsy. And, and I'd like to see the minutes of our meetings improved so that there's a representation of the key points that are made beyond just the motion. And our, our minutes have changed over the years from that detail to what we're seeing now. And I'm sure there's a philosophy at work here of her change and efficiency. But on the other hand, I, as a commissioner, can't go back and look up something that I want to find out what the rationale was if the minutes don't show it. Because if they've been taken off the, anyway. Advocacy, I'd like to aggressively advocate for legislative measures to eliminate and limit the dark store damage to our local governments and develop an ordinance to pursue collection of the transient guest tax for short-term rentals. And I include Airbnb. They're not two categories, they're the same category. And collaborate with priority, the priorities of the League of Kansas Municipalities generally. There you go. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, and I, mine aren't on this list here because I didn't get them sent to you in time. And I just have, you know, four items. You know, one is, is always the budget. And some of you have already covered some of the things that I would put in there. But, you know, I'm interested in us pursuing, you know, flat mill levy as, as usual. And that means, you know, looking at the EcoDevo funds and all the different assets. Underneath that, you know, the debt, the EcoDevo fund money was passed, you know, 70% to go against debt reduction. So that should help with the CIP. The third one under the budget is one I've mentioned several years in a row, we, we've never taken it up. And that is to redo the charter ordinance for the library so that it's six mills to include the employee benefit fund. Because right now the library can do six mills, and if they exceed it, the employee benefit fund part goes into the general fund. Now, they haven't exceeded it the past few years, so it hasn't been a problem. But again, if we're gonna do long-term planning and budgeting, we can count on, we need to change that so that it's crystal clear that it'll be no more than six mills. And the other one under that is outside agencies. We need to define what they are. Like the police department, to me, wouldn't fall under this. It's, it's an outside agency, but, you know, we get that bill from the law board. I'm talking all the other ones, and we should limit that to one mill. Otherwise, it just keeps growing, and that's been a continual problem for 10 years. We need to determine how to fund the business improvement districts. You know, is it gonna be transient guest tax and then with a fluctuation, or is it gonna be EcoDevo funding? And we need to nail that down so that they have a consistent thing because everyone's talking about, you know, recovery efforts, and they play a huge role. And if they don't have a revenue stream that they can count on, and right now they actually don't because there's a little bit of a shortfall, that if that's not fixed, then that's gonna go counter to all of our efforts to do, you know, recovery from this COVID thing. And then as other people have mentioned, we need to allocate those EcoDevo funds. We had, what, six CIP projects? I think the, the levy we've already taken care of and... funds. We had, what, six CIP projects? I think the levy we've already taken care of, and the airport, part of it will be the FAA. But we need to look at those monies and say, okay, how does that fit? And I think Jason already basically covered that in that OE concept, so that'll all be tied together. The second area is the law board, and some of you have mentioned that. I'm still interested in, and that's, that's a tough one, to get the county and the law board and the City Commission to agree to do some statute changes. And the legal department already wrote some of them up. It's just the way it's written, it's just some administrative, you know, fixes. But primarily to nail down the details of the makeup of the law board so that it's crystal clear that commissioners and other elected officials cannot fill the citizens' positions, you know, either for the, for the city or the county. That's the big one there. And then another issue, which would not have to go to state legislature, is to, is to nail down this funding split. Because as Commissioner Morris mentioned, you know, the county does have some requirements, not operational, the fund building parts of it. But as I've always said, what seems to not be clear is, when you do an 80/20 spirit, or it's 100% county, the city is 100% in the county, and 75% of the property is in the city, and 75% of the people are in the city. So the city taxpayer is funding about 96 cents on every dollar that goes to RCPD, and that needs to be recognized. And I think there should be some adjustment made there. And the last part under RCPD, and I mentioned it at the city-county meeting yesterday, we need to resolve this issue with the substation and how it's going to be funded, and should it be in the garage, and get that taken care of within the next, you know, six months or so. And then item four, I want us to try to sit down with the county and see if there isn't some way we can assist them in the shortfall in roads and bridges that is essentially caused by us getting the economic development tax passed. And one way I can see doing that, like yesterday, one of the topics was the, you know, the two roundabouts out there that run by the road that runs by the dam, and links up with, that's close enough to the city, to where is there some way EcoDevo money could help with that, should those projects get approved? And there may be a way to reach out. I know we can't just write them a check and say, here, you know, pass it out. I think we could focus it on, on the roads part of it, not on making up shortfalls for the smaller cities out there. So, those are my points.
Appreciate those comments. City Manager Ron Feher, I don't know, you also got the progress update from your goals that you had for 2020, if there's any comments about that. And then in my original presentation, if you care to share some thoughts on timing or priorities for some of our carryover components, such as the housing study, U D O, and the annexation study, as we try to start those back up, and when those might be best. As an example, on the housing study, that might be a good bit of information for the new board to have, that new data, to have as a reference as they develop recommendations, whether it be in workforce housing or other housing issues in the community. The study would certainly give a picture. I guess a downside on that is, you know, having that data, is it skewed because of COVID or other aspects? So, you know, I think one of the things we have seen is that, for the most part, even though the university did shut down last spring and asked people to leave, a lot of people came back because the, some of them had better access to the web locally than they did at their hometown, wherever that may be. And they just, and they were paying for that, that rent in that, in that location. So I do think there's some advantages to having some of that. The annexation study, again, I kind of mentioned, we're still in that process of indicating what those cost of services are for the different aspects that the city would provide relative to that area. I think one of the main reasons we wanted to suspend that was, at some point, you're going to want to have some discussion whether or not you want to do that while we're still in a limited capacity for participation, or not have those restrictions in place. So if you, either any of those three and any others that you might have, we'd appreciate some feedback on.
Ron, this is Yusha, Commissioner Ready. On the annexation study, this came about because they were going to be, become incorporated on their own, and then we decided, let's look at an annexation study for that area. So I don't know how you go about doing that, or how much it costs, or where we were. It was a discussion we had maybe two years ago, it seems like.
So I would, I would, I would foster a guess that, you know, we're probably at least 60% into that study already, as far as paid for. So I would, I would say it would make sense to finish it. I don't think you want to abandon it from that, that aspect of thing. Because I think that information will be very helpful to you all in determining whether or not, it's basically an initial, more general benefit cost analysis, if you will, of the pros and cons of that aspect. And then, if you want to move further, that gets detailed into a more substantial cost analysis for services. So the benefits and the expenses for providing those services for a specific area, and that's part of the definition, too, is to, obviously, we're engaged out there already. We are providing water indirectly to most of that area through the rural water district, but we have our own transmission line, and we are providing water directly to some customers already. And then, of course, we provide the wastewater services to those areas as well with the, with the sewer district. And there's some, certainly some complications related to that, and there's some mutual aid with fire. We have contracts with KDOT for some of their traffic signals that we are operating and maintaining. You know, we help them out with their sewer district with some, some of our camera and other, other equipment from time to time. So there's a lot there. And obviously, you got a new school going up out there as well. So I, I think it will be, I think it would be important to complete the study. And that, that way, you have good, solid data to refer to regardless of whether you do anything now or something in the future. That data will still be good information to have.
No, I, I agree with you. When did you think it was going to be done? I just felt like it was on hold for a while, and when we were going to continue. And what do you figure is the completion date on that piece?
So the, I think it'll take another couple of months of work internally, and then a draft that would come to the commission, which would start some of the public discussion. Again, that gets back, do you want to have some of that discussion when we're still in, in the operational mode we're in with restrictive audiences and other aspects? Because I'm quite certain there will be a lot of people that will be interested in providing comment on that, and how we want to share that with a lot of County officials and other aspects as well.
And when we were first discussing it, it's not because we wanted to do the annexation, we just wanted to get an idea
Right.
of the study. So I don't want it, there to be any kind of misunderstanding when we say discussion, as though we are in the process of doing something, but this is just information.
Right. And that'll lay out
It's not an action item of any kind.
Currently, and I guess I would use the Tataracs as an example. When the Tataracs sewer system failed, that subdivision, they needed the city sewer system to come on board. So we looked at all the other provisions of services there. And, and so the county structure has a lot of additional, you've got a fire district tax, you've got township tax, you've got a lot of sets of charges that, that if you're in a city, you don't have to pay anymore. So even for the residents, it will be good information to be able to compare whether or not the, again, the pros and cons of whether you stay like you are as a, in the county, with county provision of services, or whether there's the provision and the cost benefit of the, of being in part of the city.
Yes, I, I agree, we should finish it simply because we need to get a handle on the cost. And, you know, my thought has always been, whether we annex part of it, all of it, or none of it, if it, if it destroys our budget, because we were talking about budget here earlier, and if you annex it, and then everything goes up citywide, and everybody's property tax goes up because we annexed something, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And so I really would like to see the numbers, and so it is important that that, that study get completed.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too. I have another question. When we started talking about the housing market study, what are we wanting to try to get from, learn from that study? Is that strictly, that's not, is that strictly an inventory of what's out there, and now it's 64% rentals and 36% owners instead of 57 and 43, or whatever? Or what is, what are we wanting to find out? What are they supposed to be telling us?
Well, I'm going to ask Jared. He handled the committee with the request for proposals and has been working with that. But generally, you're going to get substantial demographic background information on, on the housing situation in Manhattan. So it's, you know, what are the variances of the existing housing stock, price-wise? You know, we, we know that's changed somewhat with declining enrollment. There's been more rental capacity available in the community, or, you know, is it, we also know right now that it's pretty competitive for, it's kind of a, I think I'd classify it as seller's market, if you're, you know, probably under, under $250,000. If you're over that, it's, it's more, not as competitive. So you're going to find a whole gamut of information about our housing situation in the air, in Manhattan, and how that compares to other places.
So it is, it's also Manhattan versus similar communities? There'll be at least some information like that?
I don't know the, yeah, go ahead, Jared.
So Commissioner, the main reason behind the process, and it will be a long process, it'll be, you know, Chad and Community Development envisioned about a 12 to 18-month process, really to help inform the city, make decisions, and now the arm of the city, which would be this Housing Advisory Board, so they have the data, not only throughout the community, historical data, but also data within subsets of the neighborhoods and populations so that we can make determinations about where to put these resources. Part of it will provide recommendations for the Housing Advisory Board to consider of where to do neighborhood revitalization programs that we talk about, where to, how to institute first-time home buyer, all these things that, kind of, these are ideas that are just kind of floating out there, but we can't really tie it to the makeup and the market of our community. It's also going to be a framework that'll set us up to update in the future, every year annually, so that each year, our Housing Board can look at these, look at the trends that are changing throughout, you know, the population and the neighborhoods and the rates in Manhattan, so that they can continue to tweak these programs over time so that it doesn't really remain a static document, and so that we don't have policies in place that aren't, you know, tied to our existing market and make those changes.
Okay. Seems reasonably reasonable.
I, I agree with the, you know, the idea of the housing study. It all really depends on the quality of the data, you know, that comes out of it. But, but it's a great starting point because, you know, like Commissioner Morris mentioned in her goals, that housing quality is slipping. But, you know, I don't know if I could say that, or say housing quality is going up. It, I don't know, because I don't have data on that. And so hopefully, this study would confirm, or, you know, tell us which way it's going. Because my impression would be different. You know, with, with a drop in students, it looks like some of the less quality housing is just not being rented. As I drive around town, I see a lot of vacancy signs, and the, and the students and people that are renting have gone to the higher quality, and that's, and that's winning out. And I hope that study would ask questions like, you know, that we used last time on, are people calling the code office and getting those, those inspections that we put in place years ago? And we still haven't put that on the leases, but hopefully, we'll get there and take care of what Commissioner Morris was concerned about. I think that would do it.
Well, I think when there's not a full economy, people are not keeping their properties up as well. And landlords with properties who do not get full income are not keeping their properties up as well either, and that's my basic rationale. I would like, are you talking housing?
Oh, I was just gonna, when you're done, I
Well, go ahead, because I'm going to talk annexation.
Well, that's fine. I was just, yeah, the problem is, is, yeah, between people who own their home and maybe have had a dip in income, they're not going to do the repairs they should. Landlords whose places are sitting empty, don't have the cash flow, to do some of the repairs that need to be done. And so it's, it's a vicious circle, and really the only potential winner on this thing would be if the, yeah, if the rents go down because people are trying to get their places rented, which has happened, and I've talked to several people that have lowered their rents on places so they could get somebody in there. So, yeah, there's potential benefit to renters, but then, or if we could figure out some way to, for some of these places to get sold to, to home buyers instead of more home renters. But there's, that's, that's the tricky question of, you know, where's the, these people off of TV? If we could find somebody to come in here and every two months, buy up a house and fix it up, and buy up a house and fix it up, and we'd be, yeah, maybe we could get, whatever that couple is, the Magnolia people, to come up here or something, so.
I really wish we had the data from last year, the study that we suspended, for what our communities like normally. Because then, when we rise out of this lower, this reduced activity level, we'll be able to have the vision for when we return to that robust level.
If I may, Jason Hilders, Deputy City Manager. I, I do like to reflect back to the 99 housing study. And when you look at what this community did a few years after that, there were a number of zoning actions and items that we debated as a community. The multifamily redevelopment overlay, which is EMFRO, and then you had your traditional neighborhood overlay, because we had a lot of people on the southern end of this area that wanted their neighborhood back. There were super duplexes going in, and people were really offended by what people were able to do with a lot or two. With the EMFRO, and now even a higher density layer in the UCR, it has created such an influx of construction. We've analyzed the EMFRO since its inception, and where it's at today, it's amazing what it's done from a property value perspective. Because you've taken eight 50 by 150 lots, and now, instead of eight single-family homes, you have complexes that are just increasing the value tremendously of that area, but it's also increased the density. We recognize that's where students were obviously renting and living, and the ability of then developers to come in without really a whole lot of incentive other than the zoning change. The housing study to me, and the other thing that occurred, Roger Schultz went out to the northeast side of town, started developing the Brookfield addition, and started putting product on the market for in the mid 80s. Well, it was about 120,000 in a matter of six months because of the demand, and a lot of that was recognized in that housing study. I think it's a good example of giving your community a snapshot of where you're at, and it allows the development community to see it, it allows neighborhoods to see it, and allows you all and the planning board to see it. Okay, now what direction can we head with housing? Can we put zoning changes? Can we put incentives? Because new market, or neighborhood revitalization was attempted early after that study. Because new market, or neighborhood revitalization was attempted early after that study, it just couldn't pick up traction. There was so much pressure for redevelopment, and people were, were profiting, that it, it just didn't make a whole lot of sense for us to get involved if somebody was going to turn a house into a rental. But if we want to return a neighborhood to more of a, a traditional neighborhood, then the NRP makes a lot of sense, and we might be able to isolate where that is in the community via mapping. Just wanted to offer that. There was a lot that happened between two thousand and twenty-ten that were results of that housing study, that really benefited and, and turned Manhattan and a few neighborhoods significantly.
I want to speak to the annexation issue. I, Aaron, go ahead, what the heck?
This is Aaron, before, yeah, before the house, before, before we get off the housing, I just also wanted to say, yes, that study from twenty-one years ago, there was a lot of action in those first five years, it created, and there's still recommendations that I think you're going to find on the next housing, housing study that weren't done. One thing I wanted to plant in your mind was, kind of, for the commission, was that, you know, there's a, there's a program that has been around, but it's also a program that now President Biden has really doubled down on and says he wants to invest in, and that's called Good Neighbor Next Door. And having a housing study to show some opportunities for other, just other expansion into other ways to access revenue to help with workforce housing, affordable housing, suitable housing, but this Good Neighbor Next Door program, it gives, it, it literally gives fifty percent off the list price of the home to your first responders, to your educators, to a lot of the people that we employ in our community that can't afford to live in our community would, through this HUD program, if you had opportunity zones outlined potentially in this housing study, where there's a, there's a high number of socially-economic, you know, low FDS number, high, high reduced lunch number, those type of things are, we need to benchmark that, because the last, we have is twenty-one years old, isn't a tall opportunity to get, get our, our teachers and our firefighters, all those people, more affordable housing than the rest of the country is going to have. As the housing study, I hope you see-
Aaron, you're cutting out really bad. We can't make sense of it.
Okay, sorry.
Now you're back.
I was, I just, just saying that document, that the housing study can be used to leverage the federal resources like the Good Neighbor Next Door program.
Yes, good. I would like to speak to the annexation east of Manhattan, and, you know, it's a, it, it's something that's been delayed a year, and the forces east of Manhattan are, are just growing larger as new homes are developed, developed at, at, I would call an aggressive rate, an assertive rate. And if we have any intention of having any input, or if we care, then we have to get busy. And I believe, I just see us as really far behind the curve on what is possible, and I'm not advocating for annexation or against, but right now, we don't even have data, information, and that's the piece. And it was my understanding that the original annexation study wasn't comprehensive, it was more just to, phase one was just to have the city discuss what the, city services would, what city services would be needed in order to annex there, and come up with an estimate for that. And then there was going to be a phase two of the housing study. So I, I'm just anxious for us to just kind of get it resolved. We have such limited growth here. On the east, there's the river, and there's Potawatomi County, and a whole different set of rules. K-State has property all north and west, and, and the Fort Riley. We are being pinned in, and we, we, we don't have time to just spin our wheels, as far as I'm concerned. So we need to be working on this at a, at a faster pace, and so that, that's just my thought. Thank you.
Appreciate that feedback, that's helpful.
I don't, I don't expect an answer, I'm, thank you.
Do you know, what, what's interesting, you know, the challenge, I guess, for the staff is everybody, you know, you've got individual goals, but how do we group these? And, you know, what I, what I heard was, you know, everybody had something about the budget, so, so clearly, you know, we probably have a budget goal, and then we've got to put the little pieces underneath it. And everybody seems to be pretty concerned about EcoDevo, and, and, you know, how are we going to take this, the current amount of money we have, and make it last till the new money starts coming in, in, in twenty-twenty-three? It, it sounds like everybody's on board with Parks and Rec, maybe the staff isn't, but it sounds like the commission's interested in opening the pools and going back to business as usual, you know, prior to COVID, if at all possible. And housing, of course, is a, is a, is a big area. And then the last one, it really all sort of fits under your OEI presentation, because everybody's sort of on board with that, and, and the categories you have there sort of line it out, and so it's just a matter of details. And there's maybe four or five things where, where we won't have a hundred percent consensus on, on what people put forth, but we could probably hash those out at another, another meeting. And I'm talking about some specific details, like, you know, when, when you try to put priorities to that, like the budget.
Right.
You know, I, I would limit the library's ability to tax us, and I would limit social services' ability to tax us. Other commissioners may not like that approach. And so that, that, that's where you get down to the priority end of it, or, or, you know, what, what's more important? And, and, and that, and I've come to that conclusion. I think ten years ago, I was more in the ballpark of, like, the city of Topeka, that just said, "We're not funding social services anymore, period." And I've come to the point now where, okay, let's fund it, but let's put a ceiling on it, and that's where the one mil, you know, came from. And, and, and that, that's sort of a compromise, you know, approach on that. But, but, but that's fundamental to, to the final budget we get. As, as Jason said in the beginning, you've got to decide what is more important, and it's got to be listed, one, two, three, four, five. And that's what we can struggle with, but we got, I think we got a good starting document and some really great feedback from anybody, everybody.
Appreciate that. So we'll take a stab at trying to consolidate that in the format of the last year's goals, if that makes sense, and-
That was a good format.
And, and put that together, and obviously, they'll have some feedback from next week's work session, as well as the strategic planning retreat. So thank you for the work that you've done with that, and appreciate it very much. And unless there's other questions, we could, go ahead. Is there other questions before we move into our discussion with Planning Next?
For Planning Next? Yeah, I have just one more question. First of all, my major priority at city staff and operations, because we've cut them so drastically in the past few years, but one of the bullet points after the housing market study was to establish financial policy about waiving fees. And, you know, we've never really discussed it beyond a talking point here and there, so I don't know if that's something we can still look into, considering what other cities might be doing, because we seem to do it haphazardly here and there, and there's no consistency. And if you're an individual resident, we often don't waive any of their fees, but it seems like whoever wants to come and speak to us about it, we just kind of do. It, it becomes troublesome when people know the path to getting a, fees waived, and the others don't, but they might be, also be eligible to have a fee required. So if we can develop some kind of a policy, or a process, or something, otherwise randomness is happening everywhere, and, and it's never free. I mean, our taxpayers are picking up that tab, so it's not like we're waiving it and the money disappears. Somebody's paying for that. So just to establish some kind of policy for, for us and for future city commissioners. Thank you.
No, I, I think staff would be very interested in having some of those discussions, because it is part of the, because we don't have a lot of property tax, fees are an important part moving forward, and, and it's something with, that we generally, there's a lot of things, Parks and Rec being one example, where we've had discussions, and you all haven't been real supportive of us raising fees. Now, some of those proposals have been pretty high, granted, but even if incrementally we've moved, and that's kind of how we've done it, we've kind of done it incrementally, you know, and not on a regular basis, like we have with utilities. I mean, utilities, we've kind of got this CIP, you've got this debt load, if you're going to add CIP, you're probably, if you don't have stuff debt retiring, then you need to see where that, that goes. And, and like we did with the, the surcharge for the levy. Now, obviously, those things only come around, you know, once every twenty, thirty years, but having that, that fee aspect, and I'll just throw out a discussion we had the other day in Parks and Rec, but it dealt with cemeteries, you know, and, and some of, they were taking a hard look at, because we cut a lot of, we cut all our seasonals out last year, and so we didn't have capacity necessarily to pay for Saturday services, and, and we haven't raised those, you know, or even the setup we do for that. So there, that is a, you know, just having municipal cemeteries is a subsidy to, to the community. I mean, it's a huge subsidy for the maintenance that we're doing to those, those cemeteries. And so, you know, should we be charging more for those when we have to bring people in and pay them overtime on Saturday to set up for that, that Saturday service? That's just an example of how we should be, and should we be, instead of, you know, the, in the CIP, we've got a new tent to set up for that service, to replace the ones we have, which we don't charge anybody to use. So should we, you know, be charging to use that? And what are those fee levels that we should be doing? And, and we haven't, we, we've repo, we've really approached things as a municipal government, but not necessarily as a business. So I'm not, I'm not advocating that we should set it as a business, but maybe we ought to be more attuned to some of those aspects, as opposed to just providing it, since we don't have growth in that revenues, in our normal revenue streams, how do we supplement that? And, and still keep things affordable, but yet have some additional revenue to help make the bottom line a little even, so.
Yeah, Commissioner, really, that's a good, good point. I, you know, I agree with, with that, that we should go that way, and I'm, I'm not, I haven't really been in favor of waiving fees, like on water hookups and all that. We should just be consistent and say, "Sorry, they're not going to get waived for anybody." And then looking at things like the cemetery operations, yeah, we probably need to adjust that, because that's bigger than most people realize.
I have one other item. I, this last year, we took, we did away with, we, three or four years ago, we had a big issue with delinquent property taxes, and it cost the city a lot of money in administrative time, legal time, and finally, we're on our way out of it by selling the lots. But I would like for us to reconsider the idea of, if, if a developer owes delinquent property taxes, we should say that they have to pay them to a current status before we will work with them. And I think that's, we, we were talking then about there ought to be some things we could do, and we've not done anything to change the dynamic at all. And so at, you know, if the commission isn't going to do that, I think I'm going to be sure to call it to the public's attention in one of our meetings when that developer approaches with regard to a proposal. I just don't want to let it stand, as, especially when there are three, you know, when they're twenty, tw- twenty, they haven't paid twenty-twenty, they haven't paid twenty-nineteen, twenty-eighteen, three years, they're sitting there on the county's books as not paying their property taxes, and they're a major developer in this community. So anyway, that's, I just wanted to vent, I just wanted to vent.
I understand, I understand that comment.
Correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, maybe, maybe I, I got it wrong, but I thought we passed that and then rescinded it, because it turned out to be a, it, it turned out not to work as we intended.
It was a lot of work, but it doesn't have to be a lot of work.
Well, I, I think, I think the issue is, it gets complicated. So if it's a one-owner, one-developer-type tract, it is much simpler than if you're dealing with a doctor's office that has thirty owners, and you have to track down all thirty of those signatures. The process we had was pretty complicated, encumbering, and takes a lot of time. So I think what we tried to convey was that in most cases, those, the assistance that that developer is asking for, i.e. benefit district, is totally subjective to, to yours opinion. So, you know, if you know this fact, that, that, that developer owes those taxes, you're under no obligation to approve his request, or their request for assistance. And that's kind of where we left it, that we felt like that maybe is an easier avenue versus tie up this process. Now, is there some other process? Maybe there is, but I, you know, I, as you say, you know-
They're, they're either on the county delinquent tax list that's on the web, or they're not, and that's all I'm after.
Yeah, part, part of the problem is, is a lot of people have multiple LLCs, where they own different properties, and if, if they develop under the same LLC that owes delinquent taxes, that's easy to find. If they've changed their name, they're delinquent under Joe Blow LLC, Construction LLC, but they're not delinquent under JB Construction LLC, and they start a new project under JB, then you don't realize that. But, but the thing is, is yet, I think, yeah, obvious cases where it's ten, twenty, forty, fifty thousand dollars of delinquent property tax, we're going to know who that is, probably, or we can figure it out pretty quickly. If it's the guy that owes seven-hundred dollars on property taxes, we, we might miss those occasionally, but I think there's, there ought to be a way to be more aware of, and if, and during, if they come to us wanting to get the help with roads, streets, special assessments, or whatever, that would be a good time for somebody with the staff to point out, "I think I remember that name from the delinquent tax list or something," and somebody ought to point that out at the time in the memo, and let the developer know, "Hey, you're on the bad guy list, and the city commission's probably not going to approve this, you want to get your house in order and then come back." I would think that would be, that would solve it a lot of the time, I would hope.
That'd be a good streamlined way to, to handle it. Otherwise, you know, Commissioner Morris will have to do extra work as the champion and keep us straight on that, but I, but I agree one-hundred percent with the intent. It's just the mechanism we put in place, unfortunately, failed miserably, which happens sometimes, but, but, but we can come back and revisit it that way, and I think it will be successful. So we got one more item, I guess, to talk about the strategic planning folks.
We do. Jamie and Sarah are with us from Planning Next, and thanks for hanging with us and participating. And Jared, did you have any introductory comments?
No, I didn't. I was going to introduce Sarah and Jamie, I think they're just going to give an overview of kind of what to expect for next week, and maybe help you start thinking about some concepts that you'll be discussing on Friday, as well as let you know of some materials that you'll be getting next week.
You want us to go, Jared?
Yep.
Good, good, good afternoon, although it's almost evening here in, in Columbus, Ohio, this afternoon. But Sarah and I are really glad to be engaged, and we appreciate the, the trust that you've put in us to help you with the strategic planning work, which, you know, we, we understand that there's never been an effort like this undertaken, you know, for the city. So we, we appreciate that this is going to set, you know, some expectations and set a tone for the future work. Sarah and I are working hard to, you know, get an understanding of the city. Jared's been sending documents and background to us at a pretty good rate, we're trying to keep up with that. We've met with most of you here, and, and you've shared your insights. We've met with some of the staff, we have more to go, but we're really, really trying to learn, and, and listening in this afternoon has been really valuable to us as well. So I'm going to ask Sarah to maybe walk you through what, maybe what we're thinking- So, uh, I'm gonna ask Sarah to maybe walk you through what, maybe what we're thinking about for next week.
I'm gonna attempt to, uh, my screen.
You're a little bit, uh, light here, Sarah. I don't know if it's just me or not, but your voice is a little bit.
Okay, let me try to speak up a little bit. Um, okay, so, give me one second. I've only been doing this for 10 months because somehow my computer wants me to approve. Are you able to share my screen here? All right, let me try one more time. It's not a, okay, there it is. I don't know why they're reset. Okay. Well, you know what? For some reason I'm not able to, all right, can you guys see this? Can you see the agenda?
Yeah, the draft agenda's on.
Okay, great. Um, so we just wanted to give you guys a little preview. Um, you know, we're gonna be spending some time together, um, next Friday afternoon focused on the strategic plan. And as Jamie says, thank you for letting us listen in today, um, and, and observe because it's, you know, it's helpful. We're, um, we're sort of drinking from a fire hose right now, just trying to immerse ourselves in everything Manhattan and, and trying to learn. Uh, I think we've been, you know, under contract for about three weeks, so we're just, we're getting hit in the ground running. Um, so we have, um, I think four hours planned, uh, next Friday. And, you know, the purpose is really to, to kick off the strategic, strategic planning process with, um, the city commission. And I think besides, you know, we, we've already, um, we've had some introductions. As Jamie said, we've met with most of you. Um, Commissioner Morris, we're meeting with you on, um, through Zoom on Monday. So we'll hear from you all individually and we'll be able to, um, that's helping us kind of have this foundation. But we, um, we're gonna start out by sharing a little bit about strategic planning, kind of, we're calling it Strategic Planning 101 here, the second agenda item. And, you know, I think just giving, setting some expectations and assumptions about what this process, um, you know, uh, is for, you know, for the city, sharing some best practices, um, maybe that's example plans, maybe it's just elements and, and things we think are, are good to think about for the strategic plan. You know, there's a lot of different ways that strategic plans can be, you know, organized and, 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 um, and structured and the framework. And I think a lot of that, we wanna make sure that we're, um, you know, discussing early on, um, with you all so that we can set ourselves up, um, for a good process. And then we'll talk a little bit about the specific approach to Manhattan. Um, you know, we had a good call with the city manager's office yesterday, which I think was really helpful to us to kind of understand the expectations. And we're working on a, um, a sort of process diagram that will help everybody. I know everyone's really excited to get involved, you know, uh, all the way from, you know, the city commission and staff to the community committee to the general public. And so we're gonna try to make sure that that's really clear about how all these different audiences and all these different participants, um, are gonna have their chance, you know, to, to, to be heard in this process, um, and truly make it, um, you know, a community-wide process. So we'll do a little bit of foundation setting, uh, you know, at the beginning. And then, um, you know, as, as Jamie mentioned, we are, um, with the help of, of Jared, sending us some documents and some of our own work, you know, looking at the census and stuff. We are going to be, um, providing sort of, I would call it a, a preview of the environmental scan. We're not gonna have it all finished by next Friday, but we're gonna try to give some highlights of it, um, and both at the community scale, so looking at some of what's happening with some of your, um, you know, demographics as a community, but also a little bit about this, you know, what we call the city scan. Um, we have put out an employee survey. It's been out a couple of weeks now. We're closing it on Monday, um, evening. And then we are going to quickly, uh, process everything we've, we've heard from the employees. And we're getting some, some more qualitative feedback from them about, you know, questions related to the city as an organization, questions about, you know, their particular department. And so it's, um, we're gonna get some good feedback, I think, to start the conversation. So we're gonna present some information at, you know, both the larger community's, uh, scale and then also within, um, within the city. And then, you know, bulk of this time, we wanna spend, you know, in discussion with you all. Um, and we're gonna, you know, I have insert key questions here because we're still developing those because we wanted to get through today. We're still learning and processing and wanna frame up our questions. But I think the goal here is to really, um, you know, start to, to hear from you all, you know, uh, at the high level, you know, at the outcome level, at the sort of vision and mission level, and start to get to some of those goals so that we can, um, really start to understand what's most, what's most important. And we've heard a number of things, you know, between, uh, our, our interviews and, and today and next week, we'll, we'll start to put some of that together. So, you know, it's been interesting today because we've heard a lot of, um, really great discussion and, and ideas on very specific things. And I think next week we're gonna wanna maybe like pull you up, you know, 50,000 feet a little bit, um, and think a little bit broader to start with that sort of, um, higher level vision, um, and then work our way down. So we'll, we'll get down to the nitty gritty, but I think we're gonna, we wanna start, you know, large. So we wanna, you know, we'll, we'll be, um, interactive, we're gonna be hearing from you all. Um, and I understand, um, from Jared that we're gonna maybe try to do this on Zoom so that we can all see each other, um, even in the boxes, but we can see our faces, um, and, and have that discussion. And then I think, you know, we'll, we'll wrap up with, there may be some, you know, some next steps. Um, some of the materials, um, you know, we, we wanna try to get the, the employee survey results, um, you know, analyzed a bit. I don't wanna necessarily, you know, send you all like a database of a bunch of stuff that's, you know, hard to read through, but it would be nice to sort of maybe feed you some of that information a little bit ahead of time, um, so that you can kind of look through that. Maybe there's questions or things that, that, um, you see and that you wanna discuss. Um, but I think majority of what, you know, in preparation that we would ask of you is, is, you know, getting those key questions, um, you know, finalized and then get those sent out. So you have some time to think about that, um, before we, you know, come together. Um, and things will come out of the discussion, you know, but I think the sort of key questions that we wanna get answered, we'll, we'll try to get those out to you ahead of time so you have a little bit of time to, to think about it. But we're, um, we're, we're, we're moving in real time here. We're gonna be looking at the survey results. We're, you know, still working on the community scan component, um, and just trying to take it all in. And we're, you know, we're excited to kind of officially kick this off with you all next week. Do you guys, anybody have any questions? Sorry, I went through that pretty quickly.
The one thing Sarah did mention was, uh, so that Jamie and Sarah don't have to look at that camera angle, uh, for three hours and maybe can see everyone's faces, we thought it would be good if we could do a Zoom meeting, uh, so not meet here, but we can meet wherever you all would like to, at your computers at home or wherever. So we could kind of have more face-to-face conversations. I, I don't think our, our upgrades to where they'll be able to see our camera angles will be complete by next Friday. So was hoping to do a Zoom meeting, uh, next week.
Yeah, that sounds like a winner because, you know, you are right, it doesn't quite work as well and there's even some problem with the sound. So me being hard of hearing, I can't even, you know, hear everything that Sarah said. It's just not loud enough. I don't wanna blow everybody else out of the room.
I know, Jared. I think that's a good idea. Um, I only had one question. We couldn't see the agenda very well, so if you can send that to us, that would be great. And the second piece is, after we do the kickoff, when do you start meeting with the steering committee?
Yes, we have their first meeting scheduled for February 4th. Um, it's a, it's an evening meeting, about an hour and a half, um, agenda with them. And at that first meeting, we're gonna map out with them, figure out the best time to meet with them, day of the week and time of the day, and we'll map up their, out their other meetings. So we are meeting with them February 4th.
Thank you.
We're also putting together our, a, a technical committee as well as planning out interviews, uh, small group interview, focus group type meetings of, you know, two to six people, not only with city staff, but community stakeholders throughout the month of February too, as they really continue to dive into the community, learn more and, and finalize that, um, environmental scan as we prepare for that March kickoff, which will really be the public wide engagement plan. We'll do some things where really, I know Sarah and Jamie and their team are really working hard on the project website so that we can get that information out to the public early in February so they can become familiar with the website, familiar with the timeline and process, even start doing some polling and, and, you know, just kind of smaller opportunities before the large public engagement so individuals can start providing feedback.
I have blocked off from 10:00 AM to 5:00. Is that correct still?
Should be one to five.
One to five. Thank you. That accounts for the four hours. So I wondered what else we were gonna be doing, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna have that. Thank you.
And we will get the, the agenda out on Tuesday as well as some of those, uh, key questions that, uh, Jamie and Sarah will be looking for you all to think about in preparation for Friday. And then as other materials may come in, we'll send those to you directly on, on Wednesday or Thursday before the retreat so you can review them.
Okay, sounds like we'll have a, a good meeting next week and, uh, we'll be able to see faces because we'll be on Zoom, which will be an advantage. Anybody have anything else? If not, then I think we've covered the agenda and we're good to go and did it in record time.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate you spending the day with us or the afternoon with us.